Hello, I'd like to call the Board of Education regular meeting to order at 7:02. If everyone could silence their cellphones and please stand for the pledge.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to turn over to Dr. Wiles to introduce our first speaker to talk about later school start time.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first board meeting of the school year. And we're going to kick things off tonight with a presentation from one of my colleagues, Mr. Paul Jenkins, who's the Superintendent of Schools in the Glens Falls City School District, a school district that has, in fact, made the move to a later start time for its high school. And Mr. Jenkins was gracious enough to come down here to Gilderland to talk a little bit about his experience. So Paul, welcome to Gilderland. We'll ask you to go up to the podium.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you for inviting me down. I appreciate it. I've had a few opportunities to talk about this at some other school districts, and we actually did a webinar a few years ago for New York State School Boards. So I'll kind of try to give you the why we did this, which I know you've done some research and had some discussion on this. And then I'll talk about how, and then some of the pitfalls that we ran into. So I have a lot of slides here this evening, but I'm not going to go through each one of them. I'll try and streamline it for you so I can actually get to the information. You know, I know the reason you're here is because you're thinking about this, or at least want to explore it, and probably like any other school district I've spoken to, you have people who may not feel it's a good idea because it's a big change. And we know that in education, change comes very slowly sometimes, so we worked through it. And, you know, I'll give some of the reasons we did this and some of the rationale as to why I think it's important, because I'm a huge proponent of this. My wife and I had two sons who were in high school at the time that we went through this, and we saw some marked changes in their behaviors, and not that they were bad behaviors, but just their sleep patterns and things that we noticed as parents. So Glens Falls, I'll just give you a very quick overview. Glens Falls, the city of Glens Falls is only four square miles, and you probably know where we are. We have roughly 14,000 people in the city. About 26% of our households have students in school. We're roughly a little over 2,000 students, K through to UPK through 12. One thing that is important for this presentation is we are a non-bussing district. Since we're a small city school, we don't bus all of our students. We have 26 buses for a non-bussing district, but we only bus our students who have transportation on their IEPs, or we have, obviously, we have field trips and athletic events and things like that. But we don't bus the larger portion of our students, so I can't speak to probably one of the major hurdles that school districts go through when they make the changes like this, and that's the bussing piece. We have a middle school and high school campus, and we have three neighborhood elementary buildings in our district. We have about 400 employees and almost 200 teachers. That good-looking young man in the middle in the red shorts is our youngest son when he was in high school. We'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about what we saw in their changes. We have about a $43 million budget, and we have nearly 50% of our students who are on free and reduced lunch. But when we started this discussion about a later start time, our elementary schools and our middle school all started at 8:30. Our high school was started at 7:40. Part of this came from, really, it came from our high school faculty in a discussion of how they could, what they could do differently to improve student achievement. And there were a number of different committees that were talking about different things. This was the one that really took off, this discussion. We did quite a bit of internal and external research. We had board resolutions in May and December of 2011, and you're probably wondering why there were two, and I'll get to that, and I'll explain that one. We did some preparation before we did this. In the fall of 2012, we had some traffic concerns, we had scheduling concerns, athletics was a concern, as I'm sure you may have heard if this has come up. We partnered with St. Lawrence University to do a sleep study, both before we implemented it and then again after. So we shifted our high school start time from 7:45 to 8:28 on September 1st of 2012, and we did that sleep study for two years. And some of the things that we saw, and I have some other information about this, are course failures decreased, tardies went down, absences went down, disciplinary referrals went down. And there are a lot of factors that go into these things, but these were some of the immediate gains that we saw. We did, we were covered by Channel 1, which is a news station out of New York City, and they kind of cater towards K-12 districts. They do, and if you go online, you can find their website. But they came in and they did a, they did a news story on it, and what they did is they followed one of our students from the time she woke up in the morning until the time she got home after school. It was kind of a neat story, I'm not going to, I'm not going to show it, but one of the great things about it was this student who, that he followed, was someone who actually picketted, was picketing outside of my office before we did this. She wasn't, you know, in favor of it because of a lot of different things that she had heard, and he followed her, and afterwards, at the end of the interview, she says how beneficial it really was. So it's, it was kind of interesting. We also, we also had an interview on a national public radio affiliate out of Southern California, and there was someone, an expert from the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement, and our high school assistant principal, Liz Collins, was interviewed on that. So it did catch on, you know, in some different areas that were nowhere near Glens Falls, but we did make some headlines. And part of that, if this is something you're going to do, it will, you know, it will make some, some people look at it and hopefully come talk to you about it. The why. So part of the reason why we did this is because we, we know after going through the research, and probably as you know, that sleep deprivation in teens has a number of different negative impacts, irritability, impulsiveness, depression, decreased functionality. Poorer sleepers are more likely to fail a grade than other students. That's, that's the research. Those are the things that, the why we looked at this and why we felt it was important to, to at least explore it and then eventually implement it. We did students, initial student surveys, and we, we tried to find how many of our students were sleep deprived. And what we were finding before we, we did this is we found students were getting five and a half to six and a half hours of sleep at the high school level, which we know is not nearly enough. The National Sleep Foundation says they need at least nine and a half hours. Now, they, that may not be a realistic number, but anything you can add to a student's sleep is going to be beneficial. When we started this, we also partnered with our local hospital, some physicians at our local hospital. They came in, met with the committee that was studying this, talked about sleep deprivation. We brought in Dr. Helena Emsalem, who is a sleep expert. That's the book that she wrote, Snooze or Lose. We brought her in, and she met with our faculty and staff. She did a presentation for our students, and then she did a parent presentation at night. So we tried to get as much information to people as we possibly could. Now, you would think by doing all those things, having the research, having the rationale as to why it's good, having studies done with your students as to how little sleep they were getting, all these things, you would think anybody's going to look at it and say, hey, that's a, you're right, that's, that's the thing you have to do. It didn't work out that way for us. We had some people who were not in favor of it. We had people in our own building, our own employees, who were not in favor of it. We had a lot of parents who were not in favor of the change. And I think part of the issue was, it was very emotionally charged, and people were looking at, how is this going to affect me? How's it going to affect my life? I'm going to have to get up, you know, I'm going to have to change the way I get my kids to school. My kids are going to have to stay later at school, they're, you know, they're going to get home later, they're not going to get to bed on time, they're going to have to stay up later and do homework. All these different things were comments that we had heard, athletic events aren't going to work out because it's, they're going to get out of school too late. So we, still, after doing all of this research and having these discussions, we brought it to our school board, and, you know, some school board members were not in favor of it, and it, it did, it did pass five to four in May of 2011. And in December in 2011, a couple new board members that year, it was brought up again to be rescinded, but that didn't pass. So again, I guess the one takeaway I would give you from this is if this is something you're going into, have everybody on board, if you can. I know it's not possible, we didn't, it wasn't possible for us. I will say, after we made the change, and after people saw that there were really no major negative effects, that, that all went away. The other thing that really, for us at the time, for making that change, we had two groups of students who were affected, the juniors and the seniors. Every other student before that, well, freshmen coming, it was sophomores, really the sophomores and juniors of the year when we changed it, all the other students, their day had always started at 8:30, so they didn't really see a difference. Our youngest son was a freshman coming in that year of 2012, so he didn't see a change in his day. He, he started at 8:30 and went till 3 o'clock. Our son that was a junior, he had been going to school at 7:40. The things that we noticed about him, the difference was, he still went to bed at the same time. There was a, a constant comment that we had always heard was, well, if you let them sleep later, they're just going to stay up later. It's not the truth. What we know about students or teen sleep patterns is that they do have sleep patterns. They generally will go to bed about the same time. It may be late for some students, it may be, you know, 10 o'clock, it may be 11 o'clock. But if they are allowed to sleep longer, they're going to sleep. For those of you that have high school students, you know that at Saturday, they may sleep till 11 o'clock in the morning, 12 o'clock. Both of our sons are in college now. We called one of them at 1:30 on a Saturday afternoon. I said, what are you doing, buddy? He said, I just woke up. I said, okay. But, so we know that they need their sleep. And for our son who was a junior that year, the previous year when he started at 7:40, I had to wake him up at 6:30, give him about 20 minutes to really get himself moving, and then he could get up and get himself ready for school. When we made the change, he was getting up at 7:30, quarter of eight, on his own. He had another hour to an hour and 15 minutes of sleep every night, which was a huge benefit for him. So we only changed our start time by about 45 minutes, but it benefited the students by at least an hour of extra sleep. As I said, it was emotionally charged. We have a local newspaper in Glens Falls, The Post-Star, and they covered it like there was nothing else going on in the world. As you can see, we had some students protest outside of my office. That's, there's about 25 students, and they had signs, and they had, so I went out and talked to them, and, but the point of this is, you'll get press coverage if, if this is something you jump into, because it is, as you saw, we had some national coverage. But this is, this is in the, in the discussions of what's happening across the nation. The one thing that we felt that we did very well, but apparently maybe, maybe we didn't do well enough, was we thought we had a lot of good communication. And we have some, we had a number of things that we put together that we put out in, with report cards to our families of our high school students the year prior to making that change. We talked about the resources that they could look at. We talked about the stud, the, the research. We, we kind of called it the Start Time News series. We put out information about the sleep study. We had students do a sleep diary. So we asked them to, to write down the time that they went to sleep and the time that they woke up, and whether or not they woke up at night, whether or not they did all-nighters. So we tried to get as much data from our own students as possible when we went into this, and we tried to put that together and, and send this out to parents so they would have information as well. And all of this information, all of these things are available. If this is something that any school district was to get into, I would certainly offer this up to use as a resource or to copy word for word. It's absolutely fine. You know, I think, I think it's important to get that information out. Some of the areas of concern that came up, families, their schedule changes. I actually had a parent of a junior or sophomore tell me that she was going to have to hire daycare because they went to work early in order to get her son to school on time. I would hope, you know, that we're instilling that in our high school students, that that is their responsibility to get to school on time, but that's how, that's how some people really felt strongly against the change. They felt like it was going to upend their entire world. Traffic was an issue for us that may not, probably is not an issue for other school districts. We have our middle school, high school campus, and before we made this change, the traffic just dropping off the high schoolers or the middle schoolers, even though it was different times, it was a nightmare. So we, we partnered with the city, and we did a traffic survey and a traffic study, and we made some changes to the traffic the year before we did this to make sure that we could, we could get a handle on how this was going to work. Staff, we do share some staff in our middle school and high school, and we had to make sure we matched up the schedules. There was an initial concern about student athletes and missing the last period of the day because we were moving the, the end time later and that they were going to miss ninth period. That came from our faculty. That was an easy fix because I told my athletic director, nobody leaves before 3 o'clock. End of story. So they were concerned about athletic practices, about games. All these things came up, and really, when it finally came down to it and we made the change, none of them were an issue. The traffic piece, as I said, we, we, we worked with our, with the city to do some studies. They, they made drop-off zones for us, they painted different zones, we put up some signs. So we, we did a lot of work in trying to prepare for what we knew could be an issue. And this is just, gives you a quick idea of, that's our campus, the high school and the middle school, and this area on Quade Street is where, where we had the traffic issues. And all we did is we just kind of changed, we put up some barriers here and changed the flow, flow of the traffic. That was one of our bigger issues, and people around who lived near the school district had concerns about it. Parents who were dropping their students off had concerns about it. And again, it's because we're a non-bussing district. And we've been doing this for five, five years now, and even the first day of school this year, I had a mom stop. I was standing, this is my office, I was standing here watching the middle school drop off, and a mother pulled up and stopped her car and said, these cones are causing a lot of drama. And I said, but you're stopping the traffic, so let's go. So, you know, it's, it's, people have to get used to different things. That's really what it comes down to. We even did think, you know, kind of a touchy-feely thing where we, if people were parked in the drop-off zone and left their car there, we'd put a note on there and give them a little coupon for coffee and say, please, you know, please follow our, our traffic rules. That wasn't my idea, somebody else came up with that. So for us, that was a big issue. Matching up our schedules, middle school and high school, that was something that actually became, it was beneficial for us because it made it a little easier to share staff when we matched up those schedules. And again, as you can see, our students are getting out of school at 3 o'clock. It's really not a major change at the end of the day. We also had parents who, or students who were concerned that they had jobs, and how am I going to get to my job? Well, you know, 2:40 or 2:20 to 3 o'clock wasn't a huge change for them, and they realized, I think, after the fact that it wasn't that big of a deal. But as I said, on the front end of the day, they gained an hour of sleep. I think I mentioned this, scheduling, they felt was an issue because they felt athletes were going to get out early, so they came up with all kinds of ideas, put phys ed at the end of the day, or put a study hall at the end of the day for students who were in athle, who were athletes, moving our, you know, Syracuse University courses or our AP courses away from ninth period. It really wasn't an issue. The one thing that I will say, the time that becomes an issue for athletics is the end of October, when the days are shorter. But by that time, generally, your fall season is over, you're getting into sectional time, and we will run into issue situations where a sectional game might be scheduled at 3 o'clock. So students are going to have to, they would have had to leave early anyways when we ended at 2:20. Cross-country skiing in the winter is a time when there will be times when our teams will have to leave early. But else, but that's really the exception and not the rule, so we didn't really run into that problem. Our games, our athletic events started at 4:15, so with our students ending the day at 3 o'clock, they can get on a bus, get to, the longest trip I think we have is Johnstown, which is about an hour away. They can still get there if the game starts at 4:30. So that wasn't really a major change either. And like I said, last two weeks of October is really the issue. Some of the things that we saw as positive, immediate changes, were some tardiness, intruency rates went down. One of our biggest issues was students being tardy, late to school. At, when we started at 7:40, we moved it to 8:30, and that number did change. Course failures decreased, we saw some changes in behavioral issues. We did, we continued the sleep study with St. Lawrence University, and we did more surveys after we made the change, and we had data showing that our students had at least eight hours of sleep and that the, the all-nighters decreased. And this was some of the data that we collected. I can't speak to the cutting detention. I don't know why that, that went up so much. Maybe because they didn't want to stay till 4 o'clock. But you can see, from 2010 to 2012, which was before the change, cutting class, disorderly conduct, disrespectful behavior, tardy, truancy, those, those numbers were 2010 to 2012. After the change of the start time, we saw some dramatic decreases. So, you know, and again, anytime things change in school, it's not one single factor that is the, the reason for the change, but, you know, I believe that this was part of those, especially the tardies. This was one that really kind of, I looked at a number of times and felt like this was kind of important to me. Our school district was, has a focus designation for the high school. Focus is not good. It's a, a bad designation by the State Education Department. And what it, the rate, the reason why we have the focus designation is because of the 2010 cohort. So the students who came into ninth grade in 2010, and the students who were economically disadvantaged, our students who were on free and reduced lunch, the graduation rate for that group, that subgroup, was 60%. So this is the group of students that graduated in 2014. And our overall graduation rate was 74%. And that was the, that was actually the year my oldest son graduated, in 2014. So these students started their high school freshman year when we started school at 7:40. In 2012, we changed the start time to 8:30, and the most recent graduating class, the cohort of 2013, the group that graduated last year, the difference, we had an 80% graduation rate for that economically disadvantaged group, so 60 to 80%, and an 89% overall graduation rate from 74%. So this is a group that their entire high school career has been starting at 8:30. Again, this isn't the only determining factor in why that occurred. We did a lot of other things throughout the course of the, the years of that 2013 cohort, but it is a factor that does affect student performance and, and the health and well-being of students. So this, this group here has been a struggle for us over the years. The 2011 cohort, their, the graduation rate for this group was only 61%. So for that to jump up to 80% means that something in these students' lives, whether it's something we're doing in school itself, with our, our faculty and staff, whether it's something that's happening at home, whether it's the change in the sleep or the start time, all those factors together, I think, really, really make the difference in what occurred. And that's, that's a huge piece for us, and it's hard data that we can look at. So that is kind of the Reader's Digest version of how we went about doing this and what, what things we saw that occurred. And I'll certainly, you know, entertain any questions that I could answer for you. If there's something that has come up that you've seen as significant in talking about this, maybe there's something I, I have left out that I could address as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Barb, you have questions? And maybe, Barbara, you also want to mention the resolution that we're doing, the Resolution 21 that's going to be proposed?
Right. We've had a lot of discussion around this table for many, many years about this question. A parent came forward, I'd say maybe 10 years ago, and brought forth the data from the 1998 Minnesota study, which was very compelling. And then maybe five years ago, a student who had done a research project came before the board once again saying, you know, we have this data, we know this is beneficial, why aren't you guys doing something about it? And we've talked as a board over the years as to, you know, the benefits and some of the problems that, that you suggested. So this year, we had a unanimous vote on proposing a resolution to NISBA, asking that organization to ask their members in the October convention that's coming up whether or not they would support a resolution having NISBA lobby the state legislature to provide some kind of incentives to school districts to change to a later start time for teens. So I'm delighted that, you know, that you're here. One of the questions that you brought up was the, the sports question, and that's always on everybody's mind. Our hope, I think, as a board, is obviously to see what we can do as an individual district, but in researching it, I think everybody realizes that if, say, the whole suburban council were to do this together, in addition to the BOSI's people, that it's far better for all the coordinations that you mentioned, the sports schedules, you know, the transfer between teachers and distant learning and everything else. So, you know, it's a slow step process, but I think absolutely everybody who has studied this question knows that it's the best thing for kids. It, it's study after study after study. You have groups such as the California PTA now lobbying out there to have schools start later. You have bills in Congress right now asking the federal government to look at this issue. It sort of puzzles me because most of these things that are before state legislatures are asking the state to study the issue. I mean, this issue has been studied ad infinitum, but I guess that's the little baby step that you take to make progress in our kind of climate. So as I said, I'm delighted that, you know, you, you started the education process. We hope that our parents, you know, that are seeing this, will provide more information over the course of the year as, as to the benefits. You touched on a few of them, but there are others as well that all of the studies, and I mean all the studies, show that it's so much more beneficial to kids. So I just want to thank you on behalf of the board, and I don't know if anybody else has any questions, but you've really sort of started the ball rolling and, and given us sort of a foundation- of a foundation in which to spring from. And as I said, I, I hope we can get on board as you have.
And really, you know, you mentioned the sports. It's just a different way of looking at things. I mean, when we were, when we ended our day at two forty, our students probably spent forty-five minutes, if they weren't working with a teacher after school, they were just hanging around. They were in the locker room, or they were waiting for a bus, or they were, and, you know, you can probably take a look at whether or not that's occurring in your district. There really was some downtime. So when we moved it forty-five minutes, then it was just kind of, okay, let's go. We get on the bus. If there are practices, they'll start practices, but we also have a commitment that students are, should be working with their teachers after school. That's their first priority. So coaches are on board with it. And we had, we did have a lot of pushback from coaches that said, you know, we, we won't be able to get to the games on time to do our warm-ups. We won't be able to, you know, we're, practice is going to go longer. And students and parents said, well, they're going to get home later, and they're going to stay up later doing homework. Really talking about a very small window of time, forty-five minutes. I'm not sure what your start time is in the morning quarter, is it quarter of eight? Seven thirty? Even if you went to eight fifteen, you're talking about forty-five minutes on either end of the day, but probably giving your students a good forty-five minutes to an hour of extra sleep. You know, it, I think, we can come up with a lot of things that will be roadblocks to get there. But as you said, the benefits and the, you know, when we're talking about health of our students, we know that, you know, the adolescent brain is wired very, very differently, no offense to any of our students that are in here, very differently than, than the adult brain. So we know that. And, and as you said, the research shows it. So making these changes is really beneficial. I will say, the first time we did, we threw this out to the students, we said, we sent out a survey and said, how many of you would like to start the day at eight thirty instead of seven forty? I would say a hundred percent of the students said absolutely yes. And when, you know, the principal, assistant principal came back and told me, he said, Paul, look at this, all the kids want to do this. And I said, did you tell them it's, their day's going to end at three o'clock? He went back and did that again, and the, the answers were a little different. So getting the information out to the students, to the parents, is very, very important. And again, you know, I think most school districts look at the issue of transportation and bus runs as probably the biggest hurdle that they have to get over. We were very lucky that we didn't have to deal with that. So to say it was easy, it wasn't easy to do this because we did have a lot of pushback. But it was probably easier for us to make that change. But again, I think we've seen the benefits. And, you know, and even the adult, I would say probably seventy-five percent of the student attitude that were against or not in favor of this change was probably given to them by adults. Because the adults saw the change, they didn't really like that, so they talked about it. And students, as we know, they're going to take what they hear, and they're going to say, oh, that's right, well, this is going to happen, or this is going to happen. So I, if I had to do this again, I think I would have spent a larger amount, a longer amount of time working with our faculty and staff on, on the real benefits and why it's important, and why are we here, and why are we doing this? We're not here because, you know, our schedule is really cool, we get out at three o'clock and, or two thirty, and I can go do this afterwards. We're here for those students. And ninety percent of our teachers don't leave, never left at two thirty or three o'clock. They're there much later than that. So the impact for their day wasn't, wasn't really what I think was being perceived. So it's, a lot of it is perception, a lot of it is what, how people deal with change. But again, the education of why it's important is probably the biggest piece.
So I know you said that you're a non-busing district. So did any of this impact your budget? And so how did it?
Actually, it, it really didn't. If anything, it may have, there may have been some, some positive impacts in as far as, you know, sharing staff throughout the middle school and high school, but there was really no, no major impact to our budget due to this. The one thing I will say that we still have not been able to address goes exactly to your point of our neighboring districts doing the same thing. So BOSEs, we have a morning BOSEs program and an afternoon BOSEs program for our students. Our BOSEs and the others, the neighboring schools are not on the same schedule. So any of our students who go to an AM Vo-Tec program still have to go early. That's something we couldn't change and we couldn't overcome. If all of the suburban council schools were to do this at the same time, yeah, you're exactly right, everybody's on the same schedule, BOSEs is on the same schedule, distance learning, so, but as far as a budgetary impact, no.
I know you said this was the Reader's Digest version for your presentation, which was excellent, by the way, and thanks for being here. You mentioned a study that you teamed up with St. Lawrence University, and you had a slide about that.
Yes.
And that, that seems very interesting because it's before and after. So can we get a Cliff Notes version of that study?
Sure. So Pamela Thatcher was the professor at St. Lawrence University, and there was a connection with one of our assistant principals who had attended St. Lawrence, and she was able to have this professor basically take a research class of hers, and she came down and did some study, did a number of survey questions for our students. They did the sleep diary, put that data together. So we did it before, as we were working up towards whether or not we were going to make the change. So well before the decision to do it, we started that study. And then for a year and a half after we made the change, they continued to do some similar surveys and collected the data for us. And that was, I mean, that was a huge kind of, it kind of fell in our laps for that to happen because everything worked out at the right time. But I'm sure that if this was something that, you know, had you planned ahead, obviously there are, you know, plenty of higher education institutions that would probably jump, jump on something like this.
Is that study available online, or?
I can certainly, yeah, I can certainly get that data.
That'd be great.
And send it to Superintendent Wiles.
That'd be great, thank you.
I don't think I have, I don't think we have all of that on our website, but I can certainly research it for you.
You don't, I already looked.
I figured. Any other questions?
Seema's got it.
Seema has another one? Okay.
Now that you're done and have gone through the whole change, looking back, is there anything that you wish that you had done differently?
I think, I mentioned the, you know, the, the actual information with our staff, probably staff development is one piece that we didn't really think about because we, we brought in the sleep expert, and we felt like, okay, we're going to do a presentation. I don't think that was enough, to be honest with you. I think actual staff development, and we had done all the brain research in the past with our staff, but really taking some time for them to really understand and appreciate the difference that more sleep for adolescents would make. I think that's one piece that would probably make a difference because, as I said, we had staff who were not in favor of the change. So I don't think we did enough to really educate everybody. So that's the first part, because if you don't, and even though this started from a small group of teachers, that's where this committee started, it was a handful of teachers and one of our assistant principals, but it didn't, we didn't get everybody on board. And I think that was a mistake we had because that influenced a lot of the other opinions going forward. I think it influenced our student opinions and our parent opinions because not everybody was, you know, was on the bus with us moving forward. So that's one big piece that I think you really have to do is, is educate the people who are going to be working with the students to know, why is this important, and this is why we're doing it? It may sound kind of, you know, ridiculous, why do you have to do that? But I think you do. I think everybody has a different opinion. And getting through the myths. The myths of, you know, letting students sleep later really has, they really, there is a science to it, and you've seen the research, you know that it's not a myth. They're not just going to stay up later and then sleep later. That's not the case. They're going to get more sleep.
Lisa?
I'll just echo what the board, if they haven't said, probably definitely feels that you've done a great presentation, and I think it, it's a, I don't want to say it's a no-brainer, but it's a no-brainer. It doesn't make sense why we can't do that, other than maybe you can donate your buses because our biggest, our biggest issue is busing. And I think that would be district-wide, no matter where you are, busing is the main biggest issue.
And it's a hard concept to think about, well, could we flip our elementary school start time with our high school start time? That's very difficult, too. Even though we know those, if you have, you know, seven-year-olds or six-year-olds, they're in your face at five o'clock in the morning waking you up, we know they're up earlier, but making that change, that's a real, that's a, a real family change for students getting, younger students getting to school earlier, too. So it's a really hard, it's a difficult dilemma to get, to go through. And, you know, just purchasing seventy-five new buses and hiring new bus drivers is probably not the most practical thing either. I think there's got to be, there's got to be some kind of a happy medium. And we know that there are other districts in other parts of the country that have been doing this for years, and probably for them, you know, it was, maybe it was a little different on how they went about doing it, but maybe there are things that districts can do with their, their transportation runs, maybe there's a different way of looking at it. I don't know if your transportation director is in here, is he throwing daggers at me right now, you or she?
No, she's not here right now. I mean, we've had some preliminary conversations, and we, and back in 2010, we actually did a study to look at different ways of stacking the routes. So we have a foundation to go back to and look at again.
And there has been some change. I think one of the, the great mandate relief pieces was that, you know, you don't have to have a seat for every student if you know that they're, they have alternate transportation. That was something that, I think, how many years ago was that? Sort of?
A while.
Three or four or five years ago? I can't remember. That was a change. But, you know, there certainly are, are different ways to look at it, I'm sure.
Yeah, because that's what I was going to say, like, if, if a high school student drives on a regular basis to the high school, does the bus still stop? Does it, does it stop for that person?
Goes by their house, right?
They don't stop.
No, I'm saying, though, but when you're counting the number of passengers on that bus, are you including that person if on a regular basis they're going to the high school?
I'm looking at Neil, I don't think so.
That was, I believe that was the, the whole basis of that one piece of mandate relief a number of years ago, is that you could, you know, do a little, some different scheduling on bus runs. But, again, I'm a non-busing district, so I'm not the expert on that one.
And what's hard is you can add buses, but bus drivers, that's mean always.
And they invent the self-driving bus.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Very informative conversation.
I hope you're not offended if I don't stay.
Next is a public comment, and I sense a theme. Not going to give it away, but first is Christina Dickinson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Dickinson. I am speaking about the issue of adding a third section of kindergarten to the Altamont Elementary School. I have a six-year-old, Sam, who is currently in first grade, so last year he was obviously in kindergarten. And while I really don't think that Sam suffered academically or socially from it, I do think that he was probably one of the lucky ones. I think that, you know, they had a, there was a part-time TA in the room, but I think a lot of her attention was dedicated to often another student who, you know, a lot of like kind of one-on-one that needed to happen in certain circumstances, which led Sam's teacher to deal with twenty-four students on her own. And, you know, a lot of times, these kindergartners are coming in for their first time in an academic setting, or if they weren't, they came from a daycare, which was, you know, sort of a mandated eight-to-one ratio from, you know, the state. So this is a very different dynamic for them to not have as much attention, particularly in a structured academic setting that kindergarten would provide. So to not be able to have as much attention from the teacher, I think, could certainly be a detriment to a lot of those students. I also have a three-and-a-half-year-old son who, you know, will be beginning Altamont in 2019. So, you know, I would certainly like to see something happen between now and then. Before Sam started, we knew that the odds of the class size being large were, you know, pretty good, so we were asked to write letters and, you know, explain our concerns there, which I did, and I know others did, but, you know, nothing happened. And I know this year it's kind of the same scenario. So, you know, from my perspective, I'm hoping that by the time my younger son starts, this is, you know, issue has been resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't mention it, but if you could keep your comments to about three minutes, that was perfect, that was much less than three minutes. So I don't think I even need to mention it, just in case. And I'll feel bad if I have to stop you, so don't make me look like the bad person. George Slingerlin?
Hello, everyone. George Slingerlin, I live in Altamont District. I have two kids. One is a second grader, and I have a kindergartner this year, and I'd like to speak about the same thing that Chrissy just spoke about. And I know that there are many other people here who are going to flush out a lot of detail, so I'm not, I'm going to, everybody's time is valuable, so I won't go there. But I would like to say that about five or so years ago, my wife and I decided to build a house in this district because of the schools. That was our driving force. And since that time, the rankings that everybody pays attention to, the Gildolin School District has slipped. And I don't know what the reason is, but I think class size has been a concern that has been discussed a lot amongst our families, amongst the school. I've dealt with, the building level at Altamont is ridiculously great. Everybody there is terrific. I've had the opportunity to deal with above the building level, and it starts, the feel starts to change, and maybe that's the way that it should be. But I don't know, if you guys are aware, but I made some calls and talked to registrars of the other school districts who don't seem to be slipping in the rankings. And just so that we can bring those up, I talked to Niskiuna, North Colony, Voorriesville, Bethlehem. The average kindergarten class in those districts are twenty, with an average cap at twenty-two. In Altamont, where we've far exceeded that in, in my experience with the school right now. Bethlehem, which seems to be grabbing a pretty solid hold of the top spot, this year their kindergarten classes are eighteen, and their cap is twenty-two. So it is affecting kids. Like Chrissy said, it's kindergartners. It's the most impressionable year. They're going from either being at home or in a preschool where there's six or eight-to-one ratios, and this is setting the stage for their elementary education. And I think that a little bit more attention should be paid. If a third section isn't available, then certainly some more help right now. I don't, I think maybe a third section might be detrimental by the time that could happen, but some additional help would be great. And I think that the school recognizes it also, because, starting with my son in kindergarten two years ago, now there's three first-grade sections. there's three first grade sections, so obviously it's, you know, the problem is being recognized, so I appreciate your time, thank you all.
Thank you. Adrian Bush?
I have a current letter that I have written for all of you, in addition to that, I printed for you the email that I have sent to you this past Thursday and then a couple more letters that parents asked me to distribute to all of you tonight because they couldn't be here.
My name's Adrian Bush, this is Kelly Dover, we both are very proud to say that we graduated not only from Gilderland High School, but Altamont Elementary School many years ago now, and I just, I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to go a little bit more into depth in regards to the email that was sent to you Thursday night, it's a great concern to me as I am an educator myself, the district that I work in, we have a maximum class size of eighteen in kindergarten and then each year it jumps a couple students until they hit a max of twenty-five for the whole district, so that's the district that I am coming from, and so that, that is so important when it comes to the development of children, being able to service them to the degree that they need to be serviced at such a young age. I just want to make sure it was kind of already mentioned, but the kindergarten class sizes within Altamont Elementary School are the largest that they seem to have ever been, in the past three years kindergarten classes have been over twenty students and split into three sections once they hit first grade, I understand that part of that is due to the numbers that are coming in and the projected outcomes of the kindergarten classes, however, this is now three years in a row that this has happened and our class size this year is the largest, we're up to twenty-four and twenty-five. In the last two years, it is my understanding that not only have they been at twenty-two and twenty-three students at the entrance of kindergarten, but they have gained, if you drive around Altamont right now, there are several, several houses for sale, it is a great community for children, especially families to move into, and last year each class size grew at least one to two students, bringing them to twenty-five students, so we who are already at twenty-four and twenty-five students, if families move into our grade level, we're going to be over twenty-five and it's my understanding that twenty-five is like the suggested highest number of children in a classroom. And again, I, just to reiterate, what research has proven is that a class size between thirteen and seventeen students scores significantly higher on assessments, are academically better in the long term of their, not educational career, but once they graduate from high school, they're much more likely to have decent jobs and be able to be self-sufficient and depend on themselves. So, sorry, I'm trying to keep track of myself here, so, in addition, parents within our classes, as I have been expressing my concerns to different parents, parents have reached out to me because they don't necessarily feel comfortable voicing their, themselves, and I want you to know that several of the parents have come to me with concerns that their children were in pre-K with individual educational plans, which is called an IEP, and at the CSC table before they have been, many of the services have either been eliminated or decreased to like a 504 plan, which now a 504 plan many times falls on the direct control of the teacher, the teacher has to now manage that 504 plan, so some of these students, you'll read in one of the letters, came from a classroom with four adults in it and her, she's going to now be in a classroom with twenty-four, twenty-five other children with one, maybe two adults that will probably take the majority of the attention, so, and she's not the only one, there are several students within this grade level, this class of students at our school right now in Altamont Elementary School that are in this situation, so that is definitely a concern of mine as a parent that, that I think that we need to consider, it seems the district is no longer considering the benefits of early intervention, I, I, I don't know how knowledgeable you guys are with early intervention, but when we talk about the academic gap of students that come in at kindergarten, the range of skills that they are knowledgeable of is, is much smaller than what they end up graduating high school with, the more we, the more we can support our youngest learners, the better off we're going to be at being able to close that gap, right now with twenty-four, twenty-five children in one classroom, it's going to be incredibly difficult for the teachers to not only recognize that students within that classroom have specific needs, which have already been identified through preschool, but now they're here without those supports in place, not, they're not going to be able to get the services they need, and then on the flip end of that, we have to make sure that our highest academic achieving students are still making the progress, adequate progress, and it's going to be difficult for the teacher to balance her time among all of those students, twenty-four, twenty-five students, and if you, in my previous email, I mean, you have four kids that have needs, what are those other two, twenty students in that class doing at that time? I have received several, several comments from parents that they are concerned of their children within these, these classrooms, so now I'm going to let Kelly take over because I know it's only three minutes, but she's going to talk about possibly a suspension, so sorry and thank you very much for listening to me.
To continue where Adrian left off.
There's no pause, I didn't cut you off, that was smart, so.
To continue where Adrian left, I'm sorry, where Adrian left off, we think, while we think that the kindergarteners across the district should all be provided with smaller classes, we understand that maybe that's not possible to do during this seventeen, eighteen school year, so why are we asking that this happen at Altamont? We are aware that there's currently a classroom available for a third section of kindergarten within the Altamont Elementary School, we know that interviews were just conducted for our currently new kindergarten teacher, therefore there's already a pool of candidates to choose from, the, now that the teachers have had an opportunity to work with the students, they'll be able to equitably place students into three sections so that no class has a majority of students with identified needs, in addition, the higher achieving students have been identified and they too can equally be distributed among all three sections. When reviewing the free and reduced lunch data on the two thousand and fifteen school report card, it is evident that Altamont Elementary School is of the lowest socioeconomic status in the district. To read off some numbers, Pine Bush has the lowest percent at four percent of their students receiving free lunch, if we look at Altamont's number, we have twenty-four percent of our students that receive free lunch, so Altamont's population of students who are receiving free lunch is ten percent higher than any other elementary school in the district. This is important because we believe that children raised in poverty rarely choose to behave differently, they're faced daily with overwhelming challenges that affluent children never have to confront and their brains have adapted to suboptimal conditions in ways that undermine good school performance. If you combine all of the factors that these children face with emotional and social challenges, acute and chronic stressors, cognitive lags, health and safety issues, these factors present an extraordinary challenge to academic and social issues, let's see, you may be thinking if we provide the class with an additional teaching assistant, that that would solve the problem, but research has proven that at each grade level, K through three, in all types of schools, on every kind of standardized test for all subjects, the class student, the small class students performed better than their peers in classrooms with twenty-two, twenty-six students and a teaching assistant. And in addition, by the time you hire or are paying another teaching assistant, their classrooms, or their salaries and benefits combined will be similar to the cost of hiring an additional teacher, so in the end, we are asking you to provide our students with what is best for them and we hope that we have presented enough facts to prove that adding a third class to kindergarten this year would be the best choice for them, thanks.
Thank you.
Will you just be discussing that tonight at all?
Yeah, we're going to, well hopefully my suggestion is we're going to suspend the rules once you're done and then we'll talk about it so you don't have to be here for an hour.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, I know. And thank you for your time, thank you for sending the email and thank you for printing out the materials, I appreciate it, we appreciate it. There's one more, two more, Susan and Brian Webster?
Hello, I'm Susan Webster, this is my husband Brian Webster, we are parents at Altamont Elementary, but we are also seasoned parents of a child which we have homeschooled for the past ten years, we are not strangers to the process of assessing and meeting the needs of students and we are also not new to advocating for the proper support and services that students may require. In July, we sent a letter to the board expressing our concerns of the large kindergarten classes at Altamont, at that time in July, we were nearing the limit count of twenty-three, we were greatly concerned that as the summer progressed, more students would enroll as we were meeting families with children who had not yet enrolled, but had moved into our district. At that time, we asked that a third section be added and if that couldn't happen, at least full-time aides would be added, we were happy to see that at the start of the school year, both teachers had full-time aides, unfortunately, it then became apparent that classrooms were exceeding twenty-three students each. It's unacceptable to us as parents and others' parents we have spoken to, obviously, that this learning environment is not going to meet the needs of our students and the environment of these children is critical at this age, they are overwhelmed by just being in the all-day school, even the few who have attended a preschool program have a major adjustment to the new situation. Personally, our child has special needs, we have been identified and he has an IEP in place, but there are several students who we observed and apparent that teachers have not been able to observe yet, who may also need special needs. Let's not kid ourselves into thinking that kindergarten is just a year of play and social development, it is a big part of it, I won't say it's not, but it is also the foundation on which their academic skill will be based, just as a tree needs sturdy and deep roots to weather a storm, our children need sturdy and deep academic roots to be successful in their educational journey, now is the time to nurture those roots and make them strong. We are aware, I believe, that another class in another school was added for kindergarten when they reached twenty-five, we also believe that there is a third room available for kindergarten in our building and after reviewing the Board of Education minutes from August twenty-eighth, it appears that there is a surplus in the budget, we are at Altamont facing rooms that student counts twenty-four and twenty-five, in keeping with what we believe district policy was twenty-three, we are asking that the Board of Education act on our request and add a third kindergarten, thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Carrie?
A little short here, sorry, good evening, thank you for letting me speak, I wasn't planning on it originally, but then I had a short conversation with Dr. Wiles today and I think it really goes to what the Altamont folks are talking about, this is not something that is new and unfortunately, it seems to be a trend that has happened to Altamont the last three years, we talked about the unassigned positions in the budget and things like that in the spring, it almost seems like there's no formula for who gets what, I know we try to alleviate higher classes, but at Pine Bush, we were lucky enough to get an extra section, we have four sections of kindergarten, they were incredibly large, but at the same time, I think Altamont should have gotten it as well and if anybody else needed one, we need to do that, whether there was an unassigned position or not, it's important that these youngest learners have what they need, especially that year, you know, I'm, I'm seeing a trend in our district and I, this may be very redundant for some of you because I think it's my fourth or fifth year standing here or writing something about class size, it, it just seems like we're getting larger and larger in many of the grades and it's often just said, well, we just have guidelines, well, the guidelines need to be addressed before we do the budget, we talked about this about three years ago, maybe it's four years now, when Ms. Costin came to our school to help advise us on expanding our inclusionary practices and things like that, we talked about natural proportions and smaller class sizes to address the, you know, the needs that are going to come into the classroom that we hadn't seen before, this is one of those things we never got, it seems to me, we haven't gotten to that point yet, we've never looked at it and said, let's look at these guidelines before we budget and let's just say, all right, kindergarteners, eighteen and nineteen, that is our max, don't make it a guideline, make it the actual number, you know, second, third, fourth, whatever you want to do, three through five like we have now, and I just, I can talk about my classes, our kindergarteners are smaller, thank goodness we got an extra section because we, we have eighty or something, we would have had twenty-five, twenty-six in each one, if they had, you know, been smaller, my third grades, they're all twenty-six, if anybody moves in this year, I'm going twenty-seven, twenty-eight, I have fourth grades at twenty-six, so we have exceeded the guidelines in my building, I don't know about other buildings, but clearly at Altamont, we see that they're big because first graders get their relief, I'm just asking the Board to look at these guidelines, you know, discuss it and let's find appropriate numbers that all these kids can have their needs met, the teachers' plates are incredibly full right now with all the new demands that have come in, all the new programs, nothing's come off in four or five years that I've been paying attention, I was building president for the last four years, so I would hear all these things, ask some teachers about the day-to-day realities of what they have to teach and I bet you it's only several minutes per child that they can really deal with them one-on-one, getting them what they need, you know, we extended kindergarten until full day because we wanted early intervention, that was the whole purpose, we said this would be great, we saw that the first few years, we saw a huge difference, things have been pulled back, we're not looking at identifying things that might be needed until closer to first grade, RTI and all that, that got pushed off until the end of kindergarten, so these are things, I think, if we lower the class size, we will address all this stuff again, and I think the last couple of years, we have realized budget savings, we said we had some surpluses of six-point-three million one year, last year it was like two-point, something, two-point-eight, I as a taxpayer would rather see that money go to lowering class size, it's something we used to have, rather than just putting it away for a rainy day, thank you very much.
So, my suggestion would be to suspend the rules, so we can talk about this now and not at the end, so everyone can listen, or?
Oh, I thought it was silent.
Okay, so without objection, who wants to start? I think, I think before, I want to say, before we start, this, because I know some facts were thrown out, I just wanted to just make it clear, so, Altamont, there's two kindergarten classes?
Yes, we have, just today updated the class size of every classroom in the elementary buildings, so at Altamont, as of today, and Mr. Brabant can correct me, we have two sections of kindergarten, each at twenty-four, both of them staffed with a teacher, a six-hour teaching assistant, and then there's some additional supports that go in as well, so that is, that is in fact accurate, I have other data as well, but I'll use it as the questions arise, Peter, you're coming to the podium, would you like to?
Nope, I'm just going to sit for a minute.
So when we, when we, sorry, when we passed the budget and we looked at the, the numbers of classroom sizes, what did we think these, what do we think the kindergarten at Altamont would have been?
So when we were, in March, when we were here, our, our current number at that time for Altamont was class sizes of twenty-two-point-five, so we would have had twenty-two in one classroom and twenty-three in another, so we had a little star next to it that we would watch it and we in fact did watch it and it kind of fluctuated here and there, but ended up in summer at twenty-four and twenty-four. I do want to go back, and I, I think it's difficult to talk about averages of class sizes, because I was listening to the comments, earlier today I calculated our district-wide averages at each of the grade levels and they're not that instructive, because an average, you know, is, you could have a very high number and a very low number and the average comes in the middle and it masks that reality, so I just want to share those data points, which were actually very close to what we talked about in March, when we're using estimates, so kindergarten, right now, district-wide average is twenty-one-point-five students per classroom, high is, is Altamont at twenty-four and the low is Pine Bush, actually, the low is Gilderland at nineteen-point-two, we did add another section at both Pine Bush and Gilderland, here's where the, some of this complexity comes in, we have a flex zone between Gilderland Elementary- We have a flex zone between Gilderland Elementary and Westmere Elementary School because over the course of the year, we will welcome new students all year long. So in September, we need room in those sections because by the time March rolls around, they will be at capacity. So we have to plan for that, it's been the trend for, I'm looking at Beth and Alan, several years. So that's in place as well. Our average class sizes at first grade are eighteen-point-eight across the district. Which, and we projected it would be nineteen-point-three back in March. Our class size averages in second grade right now are nineteen-point-five, we projected nineteen-point-three in March. In third grade, our average is now twenty-one-point-three, we projected nineteen-point-nine at March. And Pine Wood, Pine, Pine Bush is the reason for that. We had seven new third graders move in in summer, most of them in August. So that creates, you know, a challenge.
So that, just, so when we were, that, when that brought up too, we, we received emails. So there's three third-grade classes there?
In Pine Bush right now, and these are with Gilderland students, we have three sections, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-six. Now, in Carrie's classroom, and in the PE classrooms, and in Art, you know, we host several Bosie's classrooms that are populated by students from all over the region. And some of those students have mainstreaming opportunities in our special area classes. So Carrie will welcome one or two of those students in some of her sections, and the same happens for PE and for Art. So that does push that number for some classrooms up.
And what's our, what's our, what's our standard when we do the budget?
Grades three through five is twenty-one to twenty-five. So our class size average, not counting any students who push in, in Pine Bush right now is twenty-five-point-three.
Right, but for two of those classes, then they're above the?
Two of those classes are one above.
Right.
I'll just continue, and this one, we got exactly right. Fourth grade, we projected twenty-one-point-five, and it is twenty-one-point-five. We currently, in fifth grade, our class size average is twenty-one-point-six. In March, we projected twenty-one-point-eight. So the last thing I'll say about class sizes is for, as many years as I've been here and preceding me, when we have used those class size guidelines, when we are one over, we have not created new sections. We've turned to using teaching assistants to help, you know, reduce the student-adult ratio in the classroom. I'm not suggesting that it's like having two teachers in the classroom, but that's the approach that we've used. And there's folks who have been here longer than I who can comment on that. So if we're one over, we have not typically gone immediately to an additional section.
And then the last question, and then I'll turn it over, just so we have the facts instead. The unassigned, we did five?
We had four unassigned.
Four unassigned, okay. And then where, are they all gone?
They're all gone.
Okay.
I have the little, and I can share where those unassigned went.
Are those full-time or part-time?
Unassigned?
Unassigned.
Uh, it's, it's four FTEs. Some of them, we use in whole pieces, and some of them, we lose, use in little tiny pieces.
Okay.
So we have, we used one FTE to lower class size in fifth grade at Westmere. Had we not done that, class size at Westmere in fifth grade right now would be twenty-seven students each class. And I'll add, Westmere also has Bosie's students who push in for specials and for other content areas. So that number would've probably approached thirty in some classrooms. Let's see. Point five, we used for supporting reading. Point two, we added a section of social studies at the high school. Otherwise, class sizes would've been thirty, twenty-nine, and thirty. We added point two to Spanish two-A. If we had not, those class sizes would've been twenty-nine, thirty, twenty-nine. We had a point one connected to release time for GTA president. One point one was to reduce the class sizes for kindergarten at Pine Bush. Had we not done that, class sizes would've been twenty-six. And that included a point one for PE.
I know you said what it was for third, fourth, what is it for K through two?
Eighteen to twenty-three.
Eighteen to twenty-three.
We have point four for preschool special education support. We have a point one for a special education class PE at the high school. We have a point one for a doubly accelerated student at the middle school, and a point two for PT at Pine Bush. And that's four-point-oh. They go fast. Barbara said to me earlier today, "Don't you wish you got that fifth FTE?" Yes, I do. I'll remember that in April.
Okay, I'm sorry. Kathy, did you have a question?
Oh, no, she answered, you re answered my question.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure we had all the facts. Anyone have questions?
Have we ever added a teacher after the start of the year, at least that you know of?
I think last year, we talked about adding a section of grade two at Westmere because we had very large class sizes and very large clusters of ENL students as well. And after a long discussion with the second-grade team and Beth Beany, we decided not to do that because of the, I mean, it would, it upends the entire school. Because you have to redo your master's schedule, you have to redistribute students.
Yeah, for all the specials.
So we ended up doing additional supports in those classrooms. And we added a third section in third grade to give that class some relief going forward. And those third-grade teachers hugged me when I saw them. So the comments that we've heard today, I, I mean, they ring true about what do we do going forward and how do we think about making sure this group of learners is fully supported? And so Peter and I also spoke today, are there other things we can do to support the learning of these students?
And have we increased the TA time? I know it was three, have we increased that?
It's six hours.
Okay.
In both classrooms.
Both classrooms.
And Peter, can you talk about other supports that are in the two kindergarten classrooms?
Sure, so when we put in the request for additional TA time when the numbers were around twenty-two or twenty-three, we responded and we increased three hours in each classroom. We were anticipating a high level of number of kids when we were starting the, making the schedules last year. So I was also able to create a TA schedule where I could bring another body into a classroom for maybe about an hour in each classroom. That, that will go into place completely starting Monday. For the start of the year, I have, I have paid for an additional TA to be in the building, going back and forth between the two classrooms to help with these first, for the first few days of school. We have a reading teacher who's able to move in for about a half an hour in each classroom and do some intervention supports. And I believe we have thirty to forty-five minutes where a special education teacher can move into one of the classrooms for some time.
I think the issue, right, is that, so they're twenty-four and twenty-four, right? So then if you made it three classrooms, then you'd have three classrooms of sixteen. Right, so that's too low, and the twenty-four is one over. So I think we've talked about this, but, you know, we have these, you know, these students go to Altamont, these students go to Limwood, these students go to Pine Bush. But that, that is the flaw in the system, that, you know, you probably would have room to put students at Limwood or at Pine Bush and then lower the classroom. But since we do have these catchment areas, which I know parents do like that, you know, they like the sense of the community of the school. But this is, this is the, the issue of it, is that, yes, I agree. Kindergarten class, I, I think twenty-four does sound high, but sixteen is probably very low then, so.
So our flex zone, which we've now, I think we're in the fifth year of it, has been extremely successful in balancing class sizes. So when a new family moves into our community and they live in one of twenty streets, we're able, and we have a giant spreadsheet, we are able to pinpoint which building the student will go to based on class sizes in each of those grades, the ENL needs of the student, whether the student has disability and the other support staff. And when I look at the class sizes in those two buildings, they are balanced and very equal. Altamont doesn't have that, I mean, there's no flexible zone in Altamont and no, you know, logical way to do that. Because I have room in kindergarten in Pine Bush, but I don't think anyone wants to send their kids to Pine Bush for, you know, kindergarten. So, I mean, we've talked at times, do we need more flex zones? And it's relatively easy to do when we're talking about people who live in apartment buildings, who have not purchased homes, that have a long tradition of going to a particular building. You know, to think about doing it in another region is a lot more complicated. And it's not easy now with even the folks who move into the apartment complexes. We get a lot of people who appeal the decision because they want building A or building B. So it's a very complex, I guess that's my point. There's a lot that goes into this.
The Carpenter Village, I know that's, is that Limwood?
That's Limwood.
That's Limwood. And that, but we don't have a flex zone for that apartment complex, but we do have it for the ones in Gilderland and Westmere. And are there apartment complexes in Altamont?
There's some.
They're not exactly. They're not similar to like a Carpenter Village, but there are probably two locations. One solid one that could fit the bidding for that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think, I think that is a, the issue.
Okay. This is my wheelhouse. Having been a, a teacher in the district for thirty years. Third grade, fourth grade, second grade. One year at Westmere, I had twenty-eight students. And then one year at Pine Bush, seventeen students. What year do you think I like best? So I don't think you've gotten any answers to your questions or concerns right now. You've gotten a numbers game. And this is frustrating. This is very frustrating. Because we're not talking about twenty-four or twenty-three, we're talking about your children. And when you, Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Slingerland, right? When you said twenty was the magic number, you're, you're pretty much right. I think most teachers would teach their entire career and go long time if you could guarantee twenty students a year. So we have contract language that we can look at this class size, and we can start moving that around because times have changed. Back when I had twenty-eight students, I wasn't teaching Common Core. I wasn't teaching a rigorous program. Things were much different. There, there has been a compression that has happened over the past five or six years with curriculum, where I, I was amazed last year what I was teaching second graders, especially in math and some of the other subjects. So class size, and we talked about it in the Candidates Forum, class size is, is huge. It, it's the biggest impact for everyone in the school. Whether it's the students in the classroom, the families, the teachers, the teaching assistants, special area people, the list goes on and on, so it, it is huge. There, there was a term used in an email from a Pine Bush parent that said this was unacceptable. And I agree with that Pine Bush parent. This has been unacceptable. This has been a known problem for a while. You, you've just talked about going back three years, so this has been a known problem. Ms. Deneen has been the, the canary in the coal mine on these numbers at Pine Bush for multiple years. This isn't something new that just began. This has been around. So I applaud you big time for coming out. And you'd be surprised how much teachers will very much appreciate you coming out and fighting for your kids and fighting for the classroom teacher, especially those kindergarten teachers. I mean, can you imagine being in a kindergarten class with twenty-four students? I can't. And I, and I've seen those kindergarten teachers, I don't know how they do it. I had twenty-three students last year, and I, and you would've had to pry them away from me. I would've not given any of them up. So, I mean, it is relative, and it, and it does depend on opinions and, and how the years go. But thi- this is nothing new, and our district made a mistake about five or six years ago because we started moving in a direction of cutting teaching assistants and cutting classroom teachers. We took classroom teachers with stimulus money, and we took those six classroom teachers, one in each building, and made them math specialists. Now, those teachers could be taken out of those positions, the stimulus money dried up a long time ago, and those teachers could be back in the classroom. And then you could be addressing these class-sized situations at all buildings. Another thing that, that we've dropped the ball on is that we're putting outside interests ahead of our inside interests. And we, when we look at the situation at Pine Bush where the Victory Daycare is getting, I'll say preferential treatment compared to classrooms of students and teachers. So, and, and we're gonna get into this throughout the night on some other issues too, about outside interests versus inside interests. You're expressing the inside interests. The teachers, the, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the clerical staff, they're gonna be expressing the inside interests. That's where our focus should be, and unacceptable. That, that's the word. So what are the solutions? I'm not sure, other than look at the contract language, go back, sit down, talk about these numbers, get a separate memorandum of agreement. That's one thing that can be done. Look at these teachers that were put into math specialist positions and put them back in the classroom. That's six classroom teachers right there. And these projections have to also be looked at. I, I mean, I don't know how, how you do it, Neil, because Gilderland is, the shape of it is the craziest thing ever. And the, the way, you know, the way we're located and the influx in and out is just phenomenal. And, you know, Pine Bush is all of a sudden experiencing that when, when it's been in a lull. It's been dormant for a while, but, so we, we just, I don't know if we have to look at, at that. I don't know how you look at that. But all of these factors should come together. But it's unacceptable. Thank you for being here and for speaking up. And I hope we can come up with some decisions to, to address your concerns now and in the future.
They think we're looking at our children like they're not a number and that they're actual children.
I think that, I think the tough part is, is coming up with a solution for the families. And that's what I'm trying to think of because I agree with you, we talked about it, about the class sizes, but looking at it for the future is not gonna help these families or the families in Pine Bush. And I'm not sure what the solution is or how to help, so that's why. That, that's where I'm stuck. Trust me, I have, I have a first grader and a fifth grader, so I, I know how tough it is in the classrooms, and I know how much the teachers are struggling, and it's a lot of kids. But I'm not sure if, if you don't do a flex zone, which I know a lot of parents are not gonna like, I understand why they don't like that because you want a sense of the community, then you are gonna have these fluctuations. And when you have these fluctuations and you have room in one school and another school is, you know, over-capacitated, you know, what do you do?
I don't know if the flex zone is a end-all and be-all solution either though, because every year, it'll change.
Right.
Every year will be, one school will be slightly higher, some, another school will be slightly lower. How are the guidelines even created for this max and, is this a state? How are the guidelines even created for this max and is this a state guideline or is this a?
No, the state has no guidelines on class size. So there's, there's contractual language, Tim is right. Um, and then the guidelines have existed, I'm looking to my right here, for a long time at eighteen to twenty-three.
Is it research? Is it, I mean, because it just, the, the class size amount is kind of, it's large. I mean, to have a kindergarten class be that big, have anything really K through three be that big. It, it's hard. I can only imagine what a teacher has to go through on a day-to-day basis to try and educate. That's their purpose is to educate, but to also, you're dealing with a five-year-old. That's, that's a very tender age and any, and to think about a five-year-old with an IEP. It's, it's a lot. So I, I don't know how budgetary, I, I don't know about this year what the solution is. I can't even think about what the solution for this year is. But budgetary next year, is it at all possible to, to lower that number as a guideline? Because I think that's the main issue. If you have a guideline that's so high and you're going to get to that guideline and you're going to say, well, we, we made it to twenty-five or twenty-three or twenty-four. I think that's the main issue with any of these families is that that's a lot of kids in one classroom with a teacher with a possible assistant. It's just too many. So I don't know how we can financially work it. But I think for sure next year, we need to work on lowering that guideline number so that we're not getting to that max. And I agree with what Tim said and what Mr. Slingerland said in that twenty really is a great number. And I don't know financially if we can do that. I'm hoping we can. I know there's, there's monies that we do have that can work towards that, but I just don't know how that would work contractually.
Right. Without, without the flex zone though, right? So you're really talking about currently you have twenty-four children in two classrooms.
Yeah.
And then if you add another teacher, then there'd be sixteen kids in each classroom. I mean.
Which isn't a bad thing. It's just financially is that.
And I agree with Tim saying try and hit twenty.
Yeah.
But when you have the zones that we have, then you're not going to do that. You're gonna, you're either going to be too high this year, like for this classroom. And this is not the first time. One over, so then you hire a TA. Or you're going to be eight lower.
You can't say it's too low. It'll never be too low. I don't think if you have a classroom of ten, that's too low. It's just a matter of financially, you're, you're getting another teacher in a classroom for a much smaller class size for that year.
Right.
For that year.
I just, I just wanted to just point out, I mean, I know it's kind of an obvious thing, but, um, children grow up and they go to middle school and they go to high school. And either, there are also, um, needs there. And I know that some of the, um, class sizes get pretty big in, in those schools too. So, I mean, it's hard to address every, um, situation unless you're really willing to budget quite a bit of more money. You know, it, because, and also in, in the high school, there are, um, situations where can you even have a particular class in a particular, um, specialized subject because maybe there isn't enough money to have the class or, you know. So, I mean, there's a lot of needs there. And while students in elementary school have, obviously, ideal class sizes are smaller. You know, there, you have to think about the other schools too. So just, just thought I might point that out.
Any other comments, Sina?
Well, like Teresa said, oh, I'd want to look at the guidelines too for long-term kind of planning because you said they've been around for a while with the class size and now the curriculum's changed so much. But, um, I remember at budget time, we all talked about class size being the biggest impact, you know, to all students. So I don't know temporarily if we can do anything to relieve, like can the district come up with something for? I think we heard a lot from K at Altamont and third grade at Pine Bush. Those are the ones that were.
Yeah, because third grade Pine Bush is one over in two of the classrooms.
Over in two classes.
Right.
And, uh, I know it could change with the other schools later on, but is there something that we can do in the, you know, now going forward for this school year? Because we're still only in, within the first week.
Barb?
A couple of things, uh, interested me. You have guidelines, but they can't be a fixed number. We have two letters here and I haven't been able to read all of them with children with very serious needs, compelling needs. And these are just two parents that have written to us tonight. And I don't know how many others are there with those kinds of needs. Somebody mentioned that, uh, if I have my notes correct, that the free and reduced lunch is twenty-four percent at Altamont. Is that correct? You can't have fixed guidelines and compare that population with, say, Pine Bush, which I think you said was four percent or was it fourteen?
That's on the going paper.
That makes a huge difference in a child's life. We, we had a presentation, I think last year, or you had gone to a poverty summit. And you know what that does to a child's learning and the ability to come to school prepared and all that. So in my mind, if we make these into three sections this year of sixteen with those free and reduced numbers. And the fact that we have two letters and you wonder how many more children with disabilities are going to be in those classes? And I'm really heartbroken that in one of these letters, if it's accurate, that a child had an IEP as a preschool child and is only going to be evaluated during the school year for services? That to me doesn't make any sense if that is truly the case. Because if a child as a preschool student has these services and now they're being placed in a kindergarten class and hasn't been identified yet, if that is true, that to me is very serious. Because one child in a class of fifteen can be a problem if, as one parent describes their child as being, you know, really disruptive and needing sort of a one-on-one. And maybe that child will get a one-on-one eventually, but, um, I would not be the least bit distraught if we had three sections of sixteen this year for that group of students. And I know we used up the, the four FTEs, but there's other money that we can transfer from other lines into that. To me, it's, it's heartbreaking. Uh, you have, the schools that we're competitive with seem to recognize a cap of eighteen to twenty in kindergarten. And as I think George pointed out, you know, we have slipped for, in our rankings from four down to eight or, eight or so. And we don't really know the reasons for that until we study it. And I think as a, as a team, we're going to this year. But I don't see any reason really with those free and reduced numbers. And even though, you know, Peter, you say you have all these other supports coming into that classroom. I think you'd probably give your eye tooth for another classroom.
I don't want to send the message. I'm saying we have enough. I'm saying what we have.
Which you're dealing with, right, right.
That's what I, I want to say. And I want to take a moment to thank the members of our parent community who came here to speak. One of the, I came from a southern school district and I worked at a rural school driks, district. And one of our greatest assets that we have in this district is our parent community. And I appreciate all that you're doing to come forward to advocate for your children. Just as I appreciate the board discussing this and taking all this information into consideration right now. I shared what I have in place and the extra efforts that frankly, my staff went to, uh, to make so that we would have some additional supports put in place. And Dr. Wiles has responded to my request. And looking forward, I, I think at the last, at my PTA meeting, I came from the difficulty that I had in discussing this matter was I have a first grade with one more student at three sections and a second grade with one less student at three sections. And a kindergarten parent community asking me why we're at two sections. And that was the difficulty that I had and, uh, in kind of, you know, empathizing with their situation.
I guess I just want to follow up on this IEP question. Is, is it true that these kindergarten kids don't get screened until later in the year? Is that a true statement?
Lisa, did you hear that question about the timing of screening of students with IEPs?
Good evening. All students who receive Committee on Preschool Special Education Services go through an annual review process every spring. And their needs are reviewed and their growth. And certainly we have many students and that's the benefit of receiving those services who no longer require services when they enter kindergarten because they kind of close that gap through preschool and early intervention and some continue to do so. So every student who does receive preschool special ed services are reviewed every spring to make a determination for kindergarten.
To answer Barb's question, when do they, when do they receive services? Let's say they need services. It gets determined that they need services. When does that happen?
It starts right at the beginning of the school year. Those students with IEPs when they enter kindergarten.
I guess my follow-up question, Lisa, to that. So the preschool students have been prescreened as of April or May or June. So they'll receive services immediately as kind of.
If they are determined to be eligible for school-age services.
Right, okay.
They will receive services in the fall.
But with a classroom of twenty-five, I think somebody mentioned, if a child that is not yet identified appears in their kindergarten classroom, when can that teacher observing the child say, mm, you know, I think this child needs some extra services? When can that referral be made to you? And when, when would that child be screened?
It, honestly, I don't have a concrete timeframe. There's a variety of intervention services that are provided to students in the general ed setting who kind of have not, we don't know when they come in, if they need, have needs. So we have a school-based support team process. We have, students are screened. And I don't want to speak out of turn because this is outside my wheelhouse in reading, um, when they enter kindergarten. So I know there's reading support staff that works with the kindergarten classroom. So there's a variety of intervention supports that are available to students who are struggling so we can intervene sooner before we make the determination that they actually have a disability.
Okay, now, I think Carrie mentioned that response to intervention has been dropped in kindergarten. Was that a correct statement?
I, no, it's not dropped. No. Our school-based support team process, and it's, it's actually, we're, have a new process where every class, every student, every class will be reviewed on a cyclical basis. So every kindergarten student, every kindergarten teacher will have an opportunity to have a whole class discussion about their student needs throughout the year. Through the school-based support team.
Yeah, it's, it's not called RTI anymore. That's the difference.
Well, response to intervention is the process our school-based support team uses. I mean, that's the process we have. The structure is.
And the acronym has to, basically, because we love our acronyms. We gotta have those.
Well, we certainly have plenty of education, but the process of RTI, the tiered model of RTI is embedded in the SBST, the School-Based Support Team. So where we had a, essentially an RTI committee process and an IST committee process previously. We've essentially merged that so that it's, it's one process that's looking at the whole child, not looking at reading separate from math, writing separate from behavior. I mean, all of those things are reviewed at once. That's new for us. That's something we've been working on literally for the past year and a half. We've had a committee of about, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty people who have been convening. We did a tremendous amount of work over the summer to really, uh, shape that process and that structure. And that's in place and that's up and running at this point.
And when you say review, it's much more frequently than under the old RTI model, which was maybe three times a year.
Yeah.
And do you feel like the comprehensive is better than singling out those?
Well, it, yes. I mean, it, I, I won't bore you with the whole history, but there, there was legislation behind this where the state was, uh, requiring school districts. I think it was around two thousand eight, two thousand nine to implement an RTI process for reading only. They never did that for other areas. It was just strictly reading. So we and many other districts went down that path, developed an RTI plan and process that was really focused on reading. As we experienced that over the, the course of time, um, a couple of things really emerged. Number one, there was a lot of redundancy with what we were doing with the IST process. So we had these two different structures that were convening to do a very similar function that, uh, to do them in, in separate groups and separate teams was becoming clear to us. It wasn't making that much sense. We wanted to bring the process together and be able to review a child as a whole child. That was a big piece of it. And then the other part of that is to, to shift that view just from reading as a disparate area, but really thinking about the learner as, as a whole learner.
All right. Can I just throw out one more thing? Um, while Mr. Bourbon is here, um, and parents are here. We, we had a question in that candidates forum, remember, if we had all the money in the world, what would we do? What would we do? And we don't have that. We have, uh, a, a budget to work with them. But if we could get a third grade, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Pine Bush, a kindergarten at, uh, Altamont tomorrow. Would it be possible for you to meet with parents in those affected classrooms, the two now? And kind of get a, you know, meeting of the minds so that you'd get a, a certain amount of volunteers of parents who would say, oh, sure, we'll put our children in that third classroom. Uh, because it is, it's an extraordinary situation. It's a little unusual. It has, has happened in the past where we've added a section. But, uh, is that something that, because again, I'm just trying to think of an idea that will help them now?
If the board requests an additional section at Altamont, we will undergo a timely process to make, to create a new class that is balanced and equal to the other classrooms. And it may involve some communication about anyone willing, uh, or it may involve some type of lottery system. But it will be well communicated and, uh, thoughtfully managed.
Peter, I think the thing that you mentioned, if we're fortunate enough to do this, um, that you would balance the classes. So I think if you just had a volunteer situation, you know, you, you may get all parents with super bright kids or something, or whatever.
We have that already.
But what I'm saying, I, I'd be more comfortable with you, you know, going over the roster and all, and, and balancing the classes.
I'm, if that were to happen, I'm very confident that the, the leadership within this district and the leadership within my school with teachers, we could come up with an excellent, excellent plan.
I just, since all of the, um, unassigned positions have been allocated, um, I'm just wondering what, if, if it wa, if it was desired to do that, to have another section, how would we, um, how would, how would it be done?
Transfer from one line to another.
Well, I'll let Neil jump in here. Ultimately, we'll need to go back and look at the budget and see if there are things that we can.
Have to look at, within the budget for areas of potential savings to make that determination.
My question's with Kathy's too. Is it feasible, I don't know if it's to Neil, to add a section of kindergarten to Altamont and a third grade section at Pine Bush to do both?
Double the money. I mean, that's what we're, we would be looking for more money.
And we can't go over the amount that the people.
Voters have approved.
So it all has to be transferred from something else?
Yes, we would need to ident, again, identify areas of potential savings, um, kind of go through the budget and see what we can identify at this point in time to see if we can come up with countable savings.
And just to confirm, we, we can't use our fund balance. Because I mean, I, somebody mentioned fun, that we have a fund balance and we can't actually dip into that in order to, um, like fund, um, like operating expenses of the school?
That's correct. So once the voters approve an expenditure budget, which they've done for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, that's our cap. That's the maximum that we can spend, uh, for the school year. So we can't exceed the amount that the voters approved.
So can we ask to, to, to look into those options?
For the next meeting, do you, you can make a mo, do you want Neil to, um, look at options to do those two things and what the cost is? And if there is additional savings for those two things?
Yeah, I, I know it's going to take time to, to figure, to gather that data, but is, our next meeting would be too late, right?
Too late. If we're going to do it, we do it tonight and move on.
Well, you can't, Barb, I agree, but you can't do it until Neil says that there's money in the budget to do something like that.
Chris, we've had budget surpluses, I'd say, the last six years. And we lament the fact at the end of the year, jeez, we know we could have had enrichment here, or we could have had that here or that here. Here we have an opportunity to help forty-eight kids immediately. And I just can't, I don't know why we would.
I don't think it quite works that way exactly. I mean, because it's not, because we can't use the, the addition, because Neil just confirmed, we can't just use additional fund balance.
I know that, I know that. But I'm saying, as the budget year goes on, there are certain expendable items that. expendable items that if, to draw from, in other words, it could be our, it could be our substitute line, it could be our, our board development line, it could be anything that over time, you know that we're gonna get a teacher's salary as a surplus by the end of the year. I mean, that, if you just historically go back ten years, every year there's been a surplus. Thank God for, for Neil and how he's budgeted for us.
Right, but we have a fiduciary responsibility, you can't just, you can't just vote to say we're gonna spend a hundred plus thousand dollars and hope that there's gonna be money at the end of the year, even though you're probably gonna be right. You're gonna have to have Neil say, these are the areas that we're gonna cut in order to, or these are the additional savings that we have currently in the budget in order to do that hundred thousand, you can't just, just, you know, pull out a hundred something thousand. I mean, you can do whatever you want, but I'm just saying, our fiduciary responsibility is that you can't do that, but, you know.
And it's something we'd all like to do, we have to understand that. Everybody would like to have these kids be in smaller classes, as well as for the teachers to have smaller classes. But this is the very beginning of the year, and, and we just don't know, and to say, of course we can do it. As I said, if you wait until October, you could pass a resolution saying, with Neil looking at the numbers, if there's a feasibility, we would like the administration to do this. And, you know, he can play with the numbers the next couple of days, but if you wait until October second, then it's another month to hire somebody, you know, you're halfway through the school year. That to me doesn't make any sense.
Well, I mean, I guess it's also a question of, are you positive there would ne, would not be any other financial needs that would come up? I mean, because, I mean, if it's, it's like, like Chris said, it's a, if it's a, if it's a hundred thousand dollars you wanna allocate from somewhere that Neil has to find, I mean, that's, that's gonna be, that's a lot of money, and, you know, I, I think there might be some other needs that might come up. I mean, I, I don't know if you can guarantee that, that that's it, you know, this is what you wanna do and that's it.
I don't know, I'm, I'm, as I said, I'm just concerned about those forty-eight kids.
Tim, you want to say something?
I do.
All right.
We have the people, they're just called math specialists right now. They were six classroom teachers. Those jobs were created with stimulus money, which dried up. So much of our math program is, as far as scores and data, is inputted by the classroom teacher onto eDoctrine, it's all right there. You could take two math specialists and put them in those classrooms, and it won't cost you anything.
And with all due respect-
It will leave you with four people who could cover, and you could work around people sharing buildings and, and work around that. So those are two spots right there, and, and it costs next to nothing. I'm sure there's probably other costs with it.
But they're also our primary providers of academic intervention services.
And, and we used to do that with teaching assistants routinely.
We did, and there was a reason we shifted away from that.
But we have very capable teaching assistants in our elementaries that can do that job. Nancy Doyle at Pine Bush did that for decades.
She did, but that was deemed to be not the most effective way for us to go forward, which was why the math specialists were created. We wanted to have certified teachers providing the program, we wanted there to be a focus. You also have to keep in mind when that was happening, a lot of that academic intervention service that was being provided by the teaching assistants was happening very randomly, very sporadically, in hallways at times. There was a lot of restructuring and a lot of cleaning up that took place with that, and I, I wouldn't at this point be in support of that, I think we'd be creating a giant void for us, for the academic supports that we would have to have.
Well, I will disagree with you wholeheartedly because the math specialist positions, again, stimulus money created jobs, that dried up a long time ago. In some buildings, those math specialists will substitute for the clerical staff in the office, and when they're doing that, they're not provide, providing services. They are writing all sorts of documentation that has nothing to do with their position. They're frequently out of-
Not aware of any of that, and that's never been shared with me by any of our principals, so that's very much news to me to hear that.
Okay, well, I'm glad I can provide you the information. They're frequently canceling classes, they are called out to meet frequently, so we can get by easily without math specialists, it could easily be done.
Well, I disagree too. You know, I did the same thing that Nancy Doyle did, and I-
I know, so what's-
Yeah, I, I don't wanna get personal, but just to say we can eliminate them as a mistake, Tim, that's too broad of a statement, it is, I'm just telling you.
So, so why don't we do this? It's almost, it's almost nine o'clock, and we haven't even started our meeting yet. We're not gonna resolve this tonight, because I think that Neil has to look at it. So if you don't wanna wait till October, why don't we just have a special meeting next week, give Neil time, we'll meet next week, we'll come up with a date in the morning, and we can discuss it. And he'll show you the options of what he needs to cut or where the savings are, and if we wanna do it for that, for Altamont, if we wanna do it for Pine Bush, we'll have it, and we'll have the discussion. How's that sound? I think it sounds reasonable.
Do you need a, a resolution along those lines?
Sure, we'll, we'll schedule a time to, to meet next week, and we'll let Neil look at it, and we'll send out to make sure everyone can come. I don't think we're gonna decide tonight, I mean, I don't mind staying late, but, you know, I don't think you're gonna decide tonight. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanna thank all, all the parents for coming. You know, we are here for the kids, I mean, that's the bottom line, I hope you see that tonight, so we're gonna discuss it, we'll, we'll send out when that meeting is, if you open a meeting, and then we'll discuss it. And hopefully Neil can find savings and-
He'll let us know in that meeting?
Definitely.
We need to post it.
It'll be posted, and you could even come, it's more exciting in the morning, so. So cute. Well behaved, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to-
Where are we?
Items. Can I get a motion for the consent items?
I have to-
Barb, yep, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll set it all up. Judy, so for the minutes of August fifteenth, Judy and myself have to abstain.
Right.
For the August twenty-eighth meeting, Barb, Tim, and Gloria have to abstain. Any comments? I just wanted to say, I know it's late, but I wanted to make sure to say that, um, so I was very disappointed to see that Linda Van Alken is retired. I know we are very happy for her to retire, but on a selfish basis, I know the years I've been here, I know some people have been here much longer, we really depend on Linda, and also Linda down, down there, we depend on. And they're always very professional, always willing to help, and I know it's a huge benefit for board members, and, and we will miss her greatly. We have to be happy for her, even if we're selfish.
Yes, I, I would like to say I don't wanna accept her retirement.
Right, I know some people ask me what-
And I, I personally stated that to her, and, and I guess she's gonna retire, but her integrity, and I, I think this goes for, for much of the people in, in that position, but Linda's integrity and her hard work and, and her, she's a force to be reckoned with in all, in all the good ways, and she will be missed, she-
And I don't know if people really realize how much we lean on Linda Van Alken, Linda Livingston to-
True Linda's.
Especially for committee meetings and getting, getting things done, and they have the knowledge base, and we ask them a lot of questions, and we do depend on them. I don't know if we say thank you enough, but we should, so.
Thank you.
Well, all I can say is, I took that letter from Linda's hands with true sadness. I have, you know, I've been doing this kind of work for a long time, Linda is the very best. She is one hundred percent committed to this school district and to this Board of Education and to doing things right, and doing the right things, and those will be difficult shoes to fill.
She's a rock.
And on a, another note, I just wanted to mention that, two things, I hope the Business Practices Committee can look at two items. One is, I know that there's two school bus drivers leaving under a year, and I hope that you can really look at the incentive program to see, is that really the best way to incentivize our bus drivers? To me, longevity payment or something like that compared to what we do seems to make more sense to me, but I'll leave that to the Business Practices to come back. And the second thing is, and I know I talked a little bit with this, with Neil, and I'm not gonna ask the questions I was going to, because I know it's late, but for the expense report, I think that it's difficult sometimes, probably for the board, to go through the expense report and really know what they should look for, especially, because, you know, you do see some big jumps, but you don't know if that's normal transition, you know, timing, or if there's a real purpose. So I hope Business Practices can look at and say, all right, maybe we should need to add some bullets, some comments at the end, or something, or you come back and say, okay, what surprises you, what worries you, and what, what is good and what is bad, but I think for most pe, I know I deal with budgets all the time, but I think for most board members, this is not the fun part of the job, and I think it's difficult. And since we do have a fiduciary responsibility, I don't think it's something we should just pass and just not read, I think it's something that we have to try to incorporate so that everyone can, can be involved. Not to give you more work, because I know there's a lot of work. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes, except for those abstentions, I'm sure Linda had it already down. All right, next up.
Yes, sir?
Yep.
I have a textbook submitted for your information, the title's The Norton Field Guide to Writing with Readings by Richard Bullock and Maureen Daly Goggan. This is for use in grade twelve college writing, and we will be seeking your approval of this book at the next meeting on October twenty-fourth. And just a second quick item, I'm pleased to share with you that this season there were over one thousand five hundred fifty visitors to the Farnsworth Middle School Butterfly Station, where students and our teachers did an amazing job this year, and we want to extend a big thank you to Carol Kelly for coordinating this year's program, and to her teachers Lisa Watson and Jill DeBois for supporting our students as they became docents of the Butterfly Station, so thank you to them.
Can I just ask a quick question about the textbook? Like, it's mandatory for schenectady, so we still have to approve it even though it has to be-
It has to be approved by the local school board.
Okay, even though it has to be, because the community college makes it a requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Are those, I remember the last meeting, Damien, there were like six books right there that are coming up to approve.
Uh, tonight?
No, not tonight, maybe-
October.
It's in October?
October.
If we wanted to get a copy of a couple of them, could we, just email?
Just email, myself or Castillo, you can send it.
Thanks.
Sure. Neil?
Okay, just one item this evening, and that's an update on the two thousand sixteen-seventeen independent financial audit. The annual financial audit for the fiscal year is nearly complete. The Audit Committee is tentatively slated to review the draft audit report on September twenty-fifth, and that's with the auditor, and we'll have an opportunity for the Audit Committee to spend some time going through that in detail and asking questions of the auditor. Subsequent to that will be a recommendation from the Audit Committee to the Board recommending their approval of the audit, and that's scheduled to take place on October third at our next meeting.
Has a whiles?
I have two items, the first is a proposed list of program reports for the upcoming school year. It is an attachment for your review. We have, in addition to the start time presentation that we heard tonight from Mr. Paul Jenkins, we have three other program reports that, for your consideration, the first, on November fourteenth, we, we'd like to pick up our conversation about instructional coaching by featuring the work we've been doing with the Literacy Collaborative and math coaching over at Linwood and the tremendous student growth results we've seen over that time. We were gonna do this in June and had to push it back, so we'd like to share that work with the Board in November. In December, we would like to provide a comprehensive status report on how we're doing in supporting all of our, the needs of our learners. We've been doing a lot of work with our students with disabilities, with our English language learners, with our educationally, economically disadvantaged students. We'd like to kind of paint a picture of where we are financially, where we are academically, with FTEs, kind of, where are we in all the work that we've been doing? And I know we were on the call on Friday to talk about these topics, one of the other groups that I think will, we may wanna add is, how do we, how well are we serving our students who need some more challenges through enrichment and, and others? So we'll be looking at that for December, and then budget season starts, so we're going to be well into that, and then in March, we'd like to give the Board an update on where we are in our, we call it engaged learning initiative, but we wanna talk more about our one-to-one Chromebook programs and how we've been integrating technology across the curriculum, what that looks like and where we're going. Some of that will be linked to the purchases and professional development that will grow from our Smart Schools bond purchases and all that goes with it. And I also know there's another topic that, I don't curse if you wanna bring-
Sure.
-that up?
Yeah, I know, I know, you started talking about it, I know Teresa and I were talking about it, and that is, and, and actually a parent brought this up, which is, for the business review, the, the ranking for Gildolan is now eight. And I know, when I first started, if I remember correctly, we were at four, and what was very interesting is when I ran for reelection, Melissa Hale Spencer from Altamont Enterprise, if anyone knows her, she has tough questions, and her question to me was, when I ran for reelection, is, okay, you had three goals, how are you doing on your goals? And the one, the fir, top one was the ranking. And so I think what would be important is, is that we look to see, okay, we're at eight, and when we were at four, where, where are the, where are the differences? You know, I know there's like two hundred plus criteria in there, you know, what is different? Is it things that are happening in the classroom? I know there's a lot of pieces that are outside the classroom. So I think that's, it'd be great to have an honest conversation at one of these nights in which we go through that and explain that to the public, because as you saw, a parent brought that up, and, you know, saying we're slipping. You know, when we were at four, I, I was wondering, how can we get to three and two? Now I'm thinking like, how do we get back to four, you know, based on that? And I know in one of the studies, Tom and I talked about it, and it, and it dealt with AP, and if you have other advanced courses that are not AP that, that hurts your ranking. So those are the type of things I think is important to tell people, because that obviously, if that hurts our ranking, well, that's fine, I mean, we do have other advanced programs that we think are important. So I think that would be a great conversation, because I know it's brought up a lot to me, I think Teresa said it's brought up a lot to her, and I think it'll be an engaging conversation.
I concur.
Not to steal your thunder, Teresa.
Do you have a proposed timeframe for that to happen?
Where would something like that be best suited? Would it be a committee meeting that-
It would be like a program report.
Okay.
Maybe like, like, that's what Dr. Wiles was about to say, I was like, are there other program reports or are there topics we wanna discuss?
Okay.
So maybe at one of these meetings, you know, just like we had a presentation today, then someone would present and, and go through that, and really talk about that.
I think it's, it's super important.
I totally agree.
I really do, because as a Realtor, it's in my business.
Yeah.
When people are coming into the area and they say, well, what, what's the top three school districts? I can't even name the one that I'm on the board of and that I live in, like, it's just, it doesn't suit, it doesn't sit well with me.
And if we, and if we think it's gonna be a bigger discussion, maybe instead of having an executive session at six, we can start at six.
Yeah.
And then, you know, have it, and then it goes through the meeting so that-
Yeah.
So is it, is that, is that supposed to be a program report?
Yeah.
And then, and then we discuss the, the report after we have it?
Just like tonight, we had the start time, and then we had conversations about it. We asked questions and topics, just like the other, the other ones, which is, like, supporting all learners and that, and that type of stuff.
So this would be kind of a, a broad program about our-
Rank.
A rank.
A rank.
And, and, and what is making us eight compared to the fourth?
We were sixth last year.
Okay.
I mean, it just-
No, you don't have to remind me, I know, so.
Let me make this suggestion, why don't we do the homework first and see if it rises to the level of a full program report? Maybe when we do the analysis, we can share it, then you can decide how you'd like to use it in a public forum.
Yeah, I don't care if it's a program report or a conversation, as long as we talk about it at some point at a, at a meeting or-
Barb?
This is just a thought, but I dug out the business department report from maybe four or five years ago, where they had a- four or five years ago where they had identified some goals. And again, maybe it's not a full program report, but if we could find out, in other words, internships were one of the questions and things such as that.
Right.
And if we pull out that report and there was a four or five goals that they had and just to see how close they came to those, I'd find very interesting.
And I think that's a good point because I think we're talking about, you know, or last year we talked about the strategic plan, but really, you know, what do we want Gilderlin to stand for, what are our goals and how do we have measurable goals and not these goals in which, you know, you can say that sound nice, but there's no way to measure without you're achieving it. So maybe when we have this discussion, hopefully that will bring us further along on that discussion also, like you just mentioned.
The other thing, totally unrelated, when we went to the BOSI's dinner, the annual dinner, you know, they share their programs and I would just love to find out how many of our kids, you know, take advantage of the BOSI's programs, you know, how many are placed there and, you know, what categories. Again, it probably doesn't rise to a level of the BOSI's report, but it'd be nice to know how many are taking advantage of those programs.
That's a good point. Any other comments? Okay, so Board President?
No, Marie still has the opening.
Although, in case you didn't notice, we opened school. And I just want to thank all the people who, you know, play a really critical role in getting school open. It is a, it is a heavy lift, but I, as I said on opening day, I don't think our facilities have ever looked better. We have, you know, people are ready to go, students came back happy, our faculty is happy and well-prepared and to get the school year going. You know, we always have our little glitches along the way in opening up school. Often they have to do with buses and, but all in all, just a tremendously professional opening of school and we're off to a great start. So my thanks to all the people who do that hard work to make it happen.
Okay. The next item is the 2017 Voting Delegate Guide. Tim, I'm not sure if you're, know about NISBA and what we do for this piece, but what happens is that Linda sends out, or she did send out all the resolutions. And so we look through the resolutions and then you do a Google survey and you write whether you support it or you don't support it. And then we come back at the next board meeting, which we discuss it and then we give Barbara our vote. She will be attending the convention in Lake Placid on October 12th through the 14th. She's our voting member, but I think also Judy, you're going?
Gloria.
Gloria's going.
Yeah.
But Barbara will be our voting delegate. So then we'll tell her what we think about the different resolutions. And I'll tell you from the past, there's some that you might not understand or have questions for and we just send out questions. A lot of times sometimes it's a question for Neil when it comes to like insurance because some of the smaller school districts or, you know, maybe it does not impact us, some of the more rural, smaller school districts.
And all this is, is a chance for the, to tell NISBA...
Right.
...what policies and what concerns we have and we want them to advocate for as a district.
And what I always find interesting is that there's a committee and those committees will recommend resolutions, but what I always find interesting is then that school districts can also put forth a resolution, just like Barb had us do one. And those are normally very unique and interesting compared to the other ones.
I'm nervous because I already did the survey.
Yeah.
Was I supposed to wait?
No, no.
Okay.
You're, you're a top student, so you could have stopped me and just said, no, I'm done.
I read through, oh, well.
Yeah.
I read through those and what was very useful was the guide with the rationale.
Yeah.
And when you look at all that, still I felt like I didn't have quite enough information or knowledge, so I know there were three criteria you could vote on, so I...
Undecided helped, yeah.
And what happens usually is, yeah, we'll come back and then for those undecided ones, usually it's a question for Neil, at least last time it was, about an insurance piece that he knows very well about and, you know, so we'll talk to him and then we'll make a decision. Okay. Action items. Neil?
Okay, far less than the last meeting, so. First item this evening is BOSI's Classroom Rental and Ancillary Services Agreement for the 2017-18 school year. This agreement is for the rental by BOSI's of 14 classrooms throughout the district for special needs students and that revenue we accrue from that is $447,000.
Can I get a motion?
A motion.
Kathy? Judy? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes?
Next item is a recommendation that we appoint Management Advisory Group Business Operations to provide Medicaid consultant and administrative services for the 2017-18 school year. The annual fee for that is $7,210.
Can I get a motion? Barb? Seema?
We need to hear from Gloria.
Oh, she's been saying aye.
She's been saying aye?
But she can't hear.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I just turned her up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
There she is.
I turned her down before. Sorry.
Passes? Neil?
Okay. Next item, we have a number of service agreements related to the provision of services, programs and services for students with disabilities. And you have, I think, five or so agreements.
Can I get a motion? Seema? Gloria? Any questions?
I just have one quick one. With all the agreements that are here, is there a reason why we have so many? Like do they, do they do different things or is it just because you need to have so many because of the population that we have?
I'm going to ask Lisa to come up and talk about the providers we use.
It just seems like there's quite a few. I don't know if they're special, they deal with special things.
They are, I don't have it in front of me.
Education, Northeast.
Education, Inc., Northeast Parent and Child Association, Northern Rivers, Parsons and Vanderheiden.
Okay, Education, Inc. is a tutoring services that are provided to students who are hospitalized in psychiatric hospitals. They are required to have tutoring when they are not able to attend school. North, Northeast Parent and Child, Parsons and Vanderheiden are private placements where students with disabilities are placed and we need to have contract for their services. And Northern Rivers is providing professional development for our staff in therapeutic de-escalation techniques.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes?
Next item is a deed notice is the first one that I've ever been involved with. I'm going to read part of the resolution and try to explain a little bit about what's going on. Board of Education of Gilderlin Central School District, having received notice from the United States Army Corps of Engineers that certain property owned by the Gilderlin Central School District, the property that we're talking about, is behind our maintenance facility up to our bus garage and is currently where we have bus parking, part of our fleet is parked there, as well as staff parking, so that's the area in question. Is safe for its current use, but due to issues related to the former Schenectady Army Depot has the potential for vapor intrusion impacts if developed in the future. The United States Army Corps of Engineers further informed the district that in the event the district plans to develop the land specifically by constructing a new building, they would offer services and assistance in determining if there was still a risk and if so mitigate that risk to the degree possible so long as notice is provided at least one year in advance of the proposed construction commencing. In light of this information and to ensure student, staff and community safety, the Board of Education hereby approves the execution and filing of a deed notice in the county clerk's office so that the potential risk and availability of services are memorialized. So basically what's occurring in this case is there are some potential vapor intrusion issues in that area. It's not in a closed building right now, so it's safe. If we constructed a building and then we had concentrations of gases that were contained within the building, it could be harmful. So this says at some point in the future, if somebody were, we or somebody else, if we sold it, were to build a building on that particular plot of land that I described, the deed notice would alert everyone that special precautions needed to be taken and also the Army Corps of Engineers is offering their services and assistance. So it's a good thing for us to have on record and also having the support of the United States Army Corps of Engineers should we or another party plan to construct a building on that site.
Great. And the map was very helpful. So they don't waive the fee because it's a school, it's just still...
That's, it's still got to be filed with the clerk's office.
Okay. Can I get a motion? Kathy? Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, were there any questions? Neil?
Next item is dual-purpose copy paper bid. Recommendation is that we award the bid to WB Mason Company, the lowest responsible bidder meeting specifications. And this is for a tractor trailer load of paper. We get those, we get that split up over three, three deliveries over the course of a year and we typically have done it in this fashion.
I appreciate that you show us what the price is for the, in the offices and also for the recycled or not recycled paper.
We continue to check those prices. We ask for prices for recycled paper, it still is much more expensive, so we haven't recommended that yet. Also, we're well below office outlets prices for, for the same type of paper.
It's good to see that, I mean, thank you.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion? Teresa? Kathy? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes? Neil?
Next is a recommendation to award a bid for rock salt and environmentally friendly ice melt for the coming school year. It's that time already where we're planning these actions that we need to take. So the recommendation is to award the bid for rock salt to Site One Landscape Supply and the award for environmentally friendly ice melt to WB Mason Company.
Can I get a motion? Barb? Gloria? Any questions? Just one quick one, if you don't know, that's fine. Can you do the bid and include it and maybe you get a lower price for both instead of using two different vendors?
We put it out so vendors could bid on both, so you'll see the prices that are reflected here. We, we could put it all with one vendor or we could split the bid, so many, two of the three vendors bid both the rock salt and the ice melt, one bid just the ice melt, but that gives us the flexibility, actually according to the bid, we could take it as a package or we could split it apart, whatever.
So you ask them, if, if, if we accepted both, would you give us a lower price for both? You know what I'm saying?
We would have to put that condition, we could put that condition in the bid or the vendor could put that condition in, but nobody did it at that point. Yeah, we can certainly add that.
Just a thought.
Yeah, we could have an alternate bid price.
Just like a service at your house, you know, if they do more. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, passes. Neil?
And finally this evening, we have a number of donations already this school year. So the recommendation is to accept the following donations. Eight backpacks and school supplies from School Systems Federal Credit Union, pens, pencils, notebooks, crayons from Natalie McDonough, approximately 50 backpacks and monetary donation for the purchase of clothes from the Gilderlin YMCA, and four birdhouses, five scoop and fill containers, four squirrel baffles and four squirrel corn coaters from Tractor Supply Company and those are all going to our middle school.
Can I get a motion? Barb? Teresa? All in favor?
Aye.
And just thank you, School Systems, Natalie, Gilderlin Y and Tractor Supply. Thank you, we appreciate it. Dr. Wiles?
Okay, my first item is certification of qualified lead evaluator for building principals. This is connected to Education Law 3012D and APPR and this certifies me as the lead evaluator of our seven building principals.
Should we actually have to vote on this?
We do.
Really? Okay. Can I get a motion? Kathy? Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Passes?
And next is the certification for qualified lead evaluators for teachers, again under Education Law 3012D, otherwise known as APPR. And this indicates that Tom Lutzick, Mike Blaster, Peter Brabant, Ellen Lockwood, Alicia Rizzo, Kristinita, Beth Beany and Lisa Knowles are hereby certified as qualified lead evaluators.
Okay. Can I get a motion? Seema? Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes?
Next, I have three plans for the Board's consideration. The first is our Project Safe Schools Against Violence in Education Act, otherwise known as SAVE. Second is our professional development plan and third are the building level emergency response plans that the Board reviewed in executive session earlier this evening.
Okay. Can I get a motion? Teresa? Barb? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And my last item is a very happy item. I am pleased to bring before the Board the contract ratification for the Gilderlin Teachers' Association Agreement with the Gilderlin Central School District. And the resolution reads, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools, Marie Wiles, to execute the proposed memorandum of agreement between the Gilderlin Central School District and the Gilderlin Teachers' Association of the Gilderlin Central School District for the duration of the collective bargaining agreement, July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020.
Can I get a motion? Seema? Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I'm saying, okay. This is great.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. All right. Board Committee reports? Judy? Not Judy, Gloria? Communications meeting?
Well, we're beginning our, our new year, so business practices will be meeting on Wednesday, next Wednesday at 8:15 a.m. at the district office and Communications Committee will be meeting on Monday, 5:45 p.m. at the district office.
Great. Neil already mentioned about the audit committee meeting, so Barb, when is your fourth policy meeting?
It's Thursday at 4 o'clock, this coming Thursday.
This coming Thursday? Okay, great. And I just wanted to mention, I mean, we could do during board sharing, but just so we're all on the same page about PTA meetings. So yesterday, I know Teresa, right, there was a middle school one?
Mm-hmm.
I could not attend the Altamont one, but I did send in notes. Gilderlin is at September 13th and Tim's going to that. September 13th is the Pine Bush and Judy will represent us there. So September 13th at 7 p.m., we need a volunteer if anyone has time on that time. It's at the high school, September 13th.
I did, I did reach out to Carm because I could not get somebody to attend it for me and I will be sending a written report to her, which she will then read at the meeting unless somebody can go.
I'm sure we can get someone. If someone could look into that, and I'll look at my calendar too, if anyone could do that. I know Judy, you're already at the meeting, Pine Bush, so it's September 13th at 7.
Yeah, it's tomorrow.
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 Tomorrow. Is anyone free tomorrow?
I sent out two notices, nobody seems is available.
I'll check. I think I could probably go for you. I'll just check when I get home.
All right, send me an email, Chris, otherwise I'll communicate with Carm.
Okay, sounds good. September 25th is the PTA Council and Christine, as our president, will attend. October 4th, Kathy is Linwood, right?
Yep.
And October 5th is Westmere and Gloria will be attending that one. So is there any other board sharing comments? I wasn't here at the last meeting, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the Cobblestone School and I don't want to start a whole conversation. I know we talk about this way too much, but I was just listening to it and all I wanted to say is that it's very interesting, I thought, because some people were not happy with my votes and told me that they could not believe that we could find someone. And what was very interesting is as people were yelling at me about not finding anyone, a person was emailing me that her family owns the property. And I have to say that I don't know if it will pan out, I don't know if she really does own the family, but she talked about her whole family history with the property. And I know some comments made it seem like, you know, you want to find the right person to make sure that they care about the property. And I know some comments made it seem like, you know, you want to find the right person to make sure that they care about the property. And I just have to say, I don't know if this, they'll, they'll end up working out. But from the emails and the conversation, I could tell you that real passion for the place and the family history of the place. And, um, so I just wanted to say that. And I, and I hope, my hope is that if there is a family that will do good things with it and they own it, that we give it back to them. That's just my opinion. I know everyone else had comments, but I just wanted to mention mine.
Well, have we begun the, the process? I thought it was supposed to be-
Yes, letters, our attorney has sent out letters to three parties that we know of that may be potential heirs to the property, and the one that Chris mentioned is, is one of the three.
I was just wondering, we never did the quiet title action, did we?
This is, uh, talking with the attorney, we decided that since we had the names of some individuals that might be heirs to start there, and then see if there's some legitimacy to any of those claims before we started the class.
So your attorney didn't think there would be a statute of limitations problem, and they're bringing their claims if you hadn't restarted the process? Because, I mean, it hasn't been used as a school for quite some time.
I'm not the attorney, so I'm-
No, I just, I just wondered, you, you said you talked to the attorney. I just wondered if you brought that up.
Um, we didn't have that level of conversation, but it was her, her advice that we take this tact first. And I think that was echoed at the meeting last time, is kind of see what that pans out to be or not to be before we make another move going forward.
All right, and then, uh, so, just so we're all on the same page, so we're gonna, hopefully in the Friday communication, we'll get the materials regarding what we had in conversation tonight. I think what would be good to know is, you know, looking at the class sizes, where are we over, right? Because I think that once we make a decision, then you're gonna have comments saying, "Well, I'm over, and I'm over." So I just think that, not now, but, you know, like, where do we see, okay, these are the guidelines we have, and here are the ones that are over those guidelines. And then also, to Barb's point and to Tim's point, is you can't treat every student the same. So if there are some classrooms where it's more challenging, what are we doing in those classrooms, and do we need more support? Is it another TA, is it an actual teacher, and stuff like that? I mean, you guys are the experts, so, um, but I just wanted to make sure we have that information. And then Neil's gonna look at, um, you know, is there extra monies available? Is there spots for savings? You know, where would the cuts be, if there had to be, and things like that, right? And then we'll send out, I'm sure Linda will send out a doodle for next week, and then we could have a special meeting in the morning, um, to discuss this.
So while we have almost everybody here, is there a morning that will work?
Well, one morning we have a, there's a meeting, right? Or is that tomorrow?
Yeah, Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Monday is Monday.
That's Monday afternoon. Is it, what about Tuesday morning of next week? Isn't there a meeting Tuesday morning? Because I thought we had one meeting Monday night, and then another meeting Tuesday morning.
There's a Wednesday meeting?
Oh, yes.
What's the Wednesday meeting?
Business practices.
Oh, business practices.
What about Tuesday morning?
What, what's the date?
The 19th.
Why not piggyback on the business practices if they have to be there for that?
Due to nine.
What day is business practices?
What time is it?
Wednesday, the 20th, at 8:15.
Can we have the meeting at 8:15 and then have business practices after that? Would that work? Or is that, or do you have to-
Do people have to get to where they're going?
Okay, that's why maybe we should make it a separate day, then.
Yeah. Yeah, because I think grandparents will be there, maybe for a little length.
How about Tuesday at 8:15?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Can we do eight?
I agree with Tuesday.
Tuesday at eight? Keep it to an hour conversation?
Gloria said yes to-
What'd you say?
Gloria said yes to, to Tuesday also.
All right, let's check with Christine, since she's the president, to make sure.
She's texting.
Are we saying eight or 8:15?
Eight, eight, eight. So everyone here can do that. All right, it's a good compromise. I know, Barb, you want to do it tonight, I get it, but it won't be so bad. Tuesday at eight, we'll have that conversation. All right, anything else?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm not used to the pace of the meeting, so, um, I had a lot of notes for back in Section 2 CPSE, CSE recommendations. I thought that was something maybe even Neil was going to share and go over about, uh, some of the budget outlook information. So I had some notes about that, but I can save it. And then there was, in the financials, there was a revenue report. Again, I thought this was something that's maybe discussed or mentioned. Um, I had some notes on that, and I wanted to tie it into this idea of outside interest versus inside interest.
Okay.
But I, but I can wait on all that.
So what happens in the meeting, because it's, it's always a learning curve with this, is-
Well, it seems like people want to get out of here, so.
So what happens is, so if you look under five, there are the consent items? So everything under that, when you make a motion, then everything gets passed. So then, when you say, you know, "Do they have any questions?", it does get confusing. But so for the minutes, the CPSE, the financials, and the personnel, we don't discuss it unless there's questions. Right, and I did have questions for the expense report, but I held it off, too. And I think that they're gonna have a discussion of, like, how to share that information, maybe, so.
But you can pull it out before they actually vote.
Yeah, right, and, and if, right, if you object or, or want further questions, we can, yeah.
Okay.
So like, under personnel action, that happens sometimes, like, if you want to talk about a specific hire or an issue, you say, "Want to take that, that out and talk about that afterwards."
Sorry, I have to get used to-
No, 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 trust me, it's-
My son will say, "You're such a newbie dad." Well, I, I'll just mention a couple of things then. Back on the personnel action, um, I did want to mention Jim Wool, who is listed for retiring. It's okay to talk about this one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, he's just been a, a great employee in the district for many years. I know when, when we had our candidates forum, I talked about how people have a certain skill set. And his skill set is electrical work and lots of other work, carpentry, building. He's just an excellent guy. He's been, uh, I think he did a big project with the server room at the high school, doing a lot of the shelving units for that. So he's been, uh, just a real good employee over the years, and he's also a teacher, because he will volunteer to go into classrooms. He spoke in elementary school classrooms, especially with fourth grade, uh, since they have an electricity kit as part of the curriculum. And he just does a great job with diagramming and, uh, good rapport with the kids, and, uh, explaining series versus parallel circuits and things like that. So he, he's a very good employee, and, uh, somebody whose knowledge base we'll, we'll miss, and his skill set. So that was one thing. And then, um, on the other thing, I just want to, I still, again, see, I'm on retirement time, so like, I could keep going all night, but I know we don't want to do that.
Doing Barb by now, so.
Yeah, but, um, I, I'm- I'm, I'm struck yesterday, as I was out, uh, working at the golf course and mowing the greens, and looking up at the sky and that beautiful blue sky, and it brought back, uh, memories of 16 years ago, and, um, the events of September 11th. And I just wanted to share, like, the teacher perspective from that day, and, and the employee perspective, uh, for a Gilderlin employee, that that was, in my book, one of the most surreal days you could imagine. I remember clicking on the computer, and at that time, I don't think Google was a big search engine that was being used, so you went to Yahoo for your information. Again, how times have changed. And, and you, about 8:58 or so, you saw this little bulletin about, uh, a small plane crashing into, uh, a building in New York City. And you didn't really think a whole lot of that. And as the day progressed, it was just, uh, so, uh, I'll use the word again, surreal, and in, in probably the most horrible way possible. And, uh, I know at, at Pine Bush, and I think in other schools in the district, we made the decision that we weren't going to tell the students anything. Didn't want to create any uproar, because a student may have a parent working down in the city. So, uh, we decided not to say anything. And, uh, I'll always remember dropping my students off for art and going up to the main office, and there was a TV on, and, uh, seeing one of the towers collapse, and then going back, picking them up from art, going to teach math or whatever, onto lunch, all, we just kind of kept going through our day. But there was just this heavy burden that kept getting more and more, uh, present throughout the day. And, um, I know for, I was struggling big time that day. And I think I struggle every September 11th, um, especially when you get those blue sky days. That's what it was that morning, not a cloud in the sky, beautiful blue sky, and such horror and, uh, cruelty that, that happened on that day. But, uh, I, I remember reading my class, uh, this wonderful book called Like Jake and Me, and it's by Mavis Jukes. Beautiful illustrations, beautiful story about just love and family, uh, friendship. It ties in orchards, which is a passion of mine. And, and the reason I did that, because I was struggling, and I, and I struggled through the book. I, I was having trouble with my emotions, and the kids were thinking, "What's going on here?" But I told them I wanted to end with a really nice story for that day, with some humor, because you're going to go home to some tough news. But we had felt, felt very strongly that it was a parent's job to, uh, to get into that discussion at home. And then the nice thing is, they come back to us the next day, and we'd have the rest of that week to kind of process and work through that. And, uh, the only reason I bring all of that up is because, uh, first of all, the timing is just amazing when you think of it, because we're almost to the point where the students that we have will not have been born at that time period, pretty much gone with that. So, um, I know, I, I remember hearing from a high school teacher that he, he was talking about this a few years after the event, and some of my former students talked about that book, Like Jake and Me. So, we, we have teachers across our district now who were elementary school, middle school, high school. Now they're employed here in the Gilderlin School District. So that 16 years is just amazing, uh, how the time has, has gone by. But, um, I guess my final point would just be that a day like that really shows the human touch and the human factor in our profession, whether it was elementary level, middle school, high school, bus drivers, custodians, all of our great staff. And, and how important it is for the children and the students to know that they have those touchstones, that they always have that human factor. And we're in a time period right now where there's so much talk of technology, and there's, uh, we're even looking at our history now, where we're going to start tearing down statues and, uh, making our history politically correct. And I'm sure there's going to be a day that comes where, "Oh, you shouldn't mention 9/11, that's too upsetting." And, and I hope we don't get to that point, because it's important to remember. It's important to keep it in context. For New York State, it's an incredibly important event in our history, even though it was so horrific. So, uh, I guess it's just the teacher and me. 9/11 was always a pretty, uh, special, uh, day to focus on in the classroom. And, uh, and put it in context. And then you have Constitution Day coming up, which is even more fun. So, uh, I just wanted to give that classroom perspective, and thought it was also important to, uh, recognize, uh, yesterday.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can I get a motion adjourned? Seema, Kathy, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a good night.
Signing off, Gloria.
Thank you, Seema.